Hello, I'm going to call to order with the big hum behind me of the Planning Commission meeting of what is today, March 18th, 2025. Kaylee, roll call, please.
Chair Claren.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Toops.
Here.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Present.
We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Danny, you're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Constitution of the United States of America, through the Republic, that you, and nation, individual, liberty, and freedom of speech.
Thank you all. Danny especially. Public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to make a comment on anything that is not on the agenda. If you have a public comment, you have three minutes. There's a timer to my left, your right.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm Courtney Henderson, Truckee Town Council member and former mayor, and I'm here tonight simply to congratulate our two new commissioners, Jason Toops and Amy Kaufman, for their appointments to the Planning Commission. I wanted to say a few words specifically to Jason because I am the one who appointed him, and I couldn't be more excited for you in this moment. When I first met Jason, he was just so passionate, so articulate, so engaged in all of the issues that surround all of what happens in Planning Commission, in land use, in zoning, and so much more. He's dedicated, and he focuses on finding compromise, and that's something that we need in this world now more than ever. Planning Commission is hard. You get really in the weeds really fast. You're getting right into that tonight, so I know you're kind of getting thrown a little into the deep end, but I know you all will do really, really great things. Planning Commission is also often a thankless role, so I'm here tonight to thank all of you for the incredible work that you do. Land use and planning, zoning, it touches every aspect of our community, making sure that we build housing for all, making sure that we protect and shepherd the beautiful environment that we all live in, making sure that we're not leaving any community members behind. So, thank you so much for your willingness to step into this role, both Jason and Amy. Thank you for your dedication, your diligence, and I am so excited for the perspectives and the vision that you all will bring to the Planning Commission. Thank you to all of our Planning Commissioners for the work that you do.
Thank you, Courtney. Any other planning, uh, public comment? And I'm going to close public comment. Uh, Section 5 on the agenda is the selection of Chair and Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Chair?
I'll nominate Coral.
Coral, do you accept that nomination?
I will accept. Thank you.
Uh, then I need a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Roll call.
Chair Claren.
Aye.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Toops.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
There you go. Uh, any nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Commissioner Taylor.
I'll accept.
You accept, so well then, I need a second on that, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Chair Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Claren.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Toops.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
We're going to switch, right?
Thank you, fellow commissioners. Um, it looks like the next item on our agenda is number six, approval of minutes. Which minutes are on the, the docket tonight?
I took yours.
You have them. Oh, you have the double secret chair agenda? Look at that. It's not listed here either. Seeing no minutes to approve, we're going to move on to item seven. Public hearings, minor review, there are no items under that. Number eight, we're going, moving on to item 8.1, Planning Application 2024, 130 DPM UPSP, the Lamperty Mixed Use Project. We have a staff presentation, do we not?
We do have a staff presentation. Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Chelsea Craigor. I'm with the Planning Division, and I'm here to present the Lamperty Mixed Use Project, which is Project 2024-130. A summary of this project, this project is a mixed-use development with 8,123 square feet of non-residential development, including industrial spaces and ancillary office. A development permit is requested for development over 7,500 square feet. A minor use permit is requested for location of landscaping and snow storage within an existing easement, and a sign plan is requested to allow one monument sign and up to seven tenant wall signs. The subject property 1109, 11093 Trails End Road is highlighted in blue here. It's currently undeveloped with the exception of an asphalt path, pedestrian path at the rear of the property near Interstate 80. The property is approximately 0.89 acres in size and is irregularly shaped, as you can see by that blue highlight. The zoning map is located on the right of that, with also the property again highlighted, and shows the location within the manufacturing zoning district. The general plan designation is industrial, and mixed-use development is allowed within this zoning district. A little bit about the background of this property. In 2005, a tentative map and plan development was approved by the Planning Commission for Pioneer Commerce Center Phase 3, which included the subject property. This subdivided a parcel into smaller parcels to be individually developed. It also modified the Development Code Scenic Corridor standards to be specific to this area due to unique sizes and dimensions of those subdivided parcels. The scenic corridor includes the properties that back up to Interstate 80, of which this property is one. The scenic corridor standards relate to height, setbacks, lighting standards, landscaping along Interstate 80. The proposed project is consistent with the scenic corridor standards required by the 2005 approval. The plan development also requires Planning Commission to be the review authority for all land use applications on lots four through nine, including this one. This includes future zoning clearance or minor use permits, et cetera, for future tenant uses. And in 2010, a certificate of correction was approved to modify the limitations on outdoor activity or storage on these lots. However, the project as proposed does not include any outdoor storage or any outdoor activity. The proposed site plan includes two buildings, which are shown in orange, landscape setbacks, surface parking, which is shown in that highlighted green, bicycle parking, which is highlighted in yellow, and a trash enclosure, which is highlighted in blue. Although the project is not required to provide parking pursuant to state law due to the proximity to the train depot, the project includes 17 surface parking spaces, and the project also includes required bicycle parking. The easements on the property are located along the west side, and I'll kind of show it with my mouse here. The easements on the property are along the west side, where there's a drainage easement, and along the rear, back here, are overlapping easements for utilities, drainage, and pedestrian access. There's an existing asphalt path through this area that's already present. The project, including this request for snow storage and landscaping within these easements, was routed to the Towns Engineering Division and to the Public Utilities District, who did not object to the project and provided recommended conditions of approval, which are included in the draft resolution. As mentioned on the prior slide, the project consists of two proposed buildings. Building A is on the western side of the project and is two stories with 3,528 square feet of industrial space, 1,907 square feet of office space, all located on the first floor. The second floor has two one-bedroom apartments, which are 762 and 818 square feet. The second building is Building B. That one is only one story with 2,418 square feet of industrial space. Building B also includes common restrooms and mechanical space. The design of the buildings is consistent with the design guidelines located in the Development Code. The project includes the use of symmetry, asymmetry, textures, and authentic materials. Exterior walls are a combination of horizontal cedar siding and metal siding. Columns, beams, windows, and doors are matte black in color, and the roof is also proposed to be black. The trash enclosure is designed to be consistent with this, with the design of the buildings, and will have a vertical metal siding in a weathered copper color with utility doors in matte black metal. The areas of landscaping are shown on the site plan with the green overlay. The project proposes a landscape alternative for quantities of landscaping required by the Development Code. The Development Code does allow for the review authority, which is in this case the Planning Commission, to approve an alternative landscape with the project if the review authority finds that the landscape alternatives achieve the same effect as the requirements. Staff believes that the proposed landscaping achieves the effects of enhancing the aesthetic appearance of the development. It increases compatibility between abutting uses and rights of way, provides conservation of water resources and stormwater management, and enhances the positive visual experience of the built environment. The project proposes a quantity of landscaping that is sufficient to meet these effects while ensuring that plants are not overcrowded and are appropriately grouped. The design as proposed is consistent with the requirements of the water-efficient landscape ordinance, and the plantings are a variety of evergreen deciduous, with the majority of plantings proposed as native species. The signage for the project is proposed as one monument sign, five feet in height, with nine and a quarter square feet of sign face on either side. The letters are LED backlit stainless steel letters. Up to seven tenant wall signs are also proposed, which would be one per tenant space, which are also proposed as LED backlit stainless steel letters with a maximum size of eight square feet each. Staff proposes that the project be exempt from additional environmental review, subject to, excuse me, pursuant to Section 15183 of the SEQA guidelines. This is for projects that are consistent with the general plan, community plan, or zoning. The EIR for the 2040 general plan was certified in May of 2023. It was noticed that a condition of approval referenced in the staff report was missing from the draft resolution. That was an oversight. It should have been included, and the Planning Division recommends a condition of approval requiring that the applicant provide proof to the satisfaction of the Community Development Director of authorization from easement holders for the location of snow storage and landscaping within easements. This would be required prior to the issuance of any building or grading permits. As I mentioned previously, the project was routed for review, and no objections were raised. However, this explicit authorization would be required prior to the permit issuance. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the project exempt from further environmental review pursuant to Section 15183 of the SEQA guidelines and adopt Resolution 202503 as amended and to include fixing some minor grammatical errors approving the project. The appeal period would be 10 calendar days from the date of approval, ending on Friday, March 28. If the Planning Commission does not want to go with the, with staff's recommendation, some alternatives are available. The Planning Commission may choose to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain. The Planning Commission may also find that the SEQA exemption recommended by staff is not suitable and require additional environmental review, or the Planning Commission may also choose to add, modify, or eliminate provisions or conditions of approval on the project, or choose to deny the project on the basis that one or more of the findings cannot be made. This concludes my presentation. The property owner, Joe Lamperty, is here, as is the applicant, Gavin Ball, and an applicant team. They are here representing the project, and I'm also available for any questions.
The agenda I have here says we would move on to the applicant presentation next rather than move on to staff clarifying questions.
The applicant has, does not have a formal presentation.
Are there any clarifying questions for the staff or for the applicant based on the materials we have?
I've got a few. Um, I just, my notes are numbered according to the conditions of approval. Can we bring that up? I don't have that in front of me. Thank you. Um, can I see number three, please? So this has to do with landscaping?
Is this the part where a foundation has to be put in to demonstrate exercising of the permit?
Yeah, that's my question's. Never mind. How about number 29? Think it's changed since what I've had. So I have it as number 29, but I'm not seeing it here. Was, Planning Commission was to look at each tenant's, um...
That is this one.
That is this one?
Yeah. One of the requirements of the earlier approval, the 2005 approval, is that the Planning Commission is the review authority for all land use entitlements, including zoning clearance, minor use permits. So any tenant that was looking to be established would come before the Planning Commission again.
Just to see for zoning purposes, right?
That's correct.
That's it. All right. I wasn't sure if it was like a real estate thing, if that made sense. Okay, thank you. Uh, number 32. Never, no, I'm good. Uh, number 35. That's the one I was looking at. So the developer shall inform all future resident tenants in the lease agreement of the onset. A draft lease agreement shall be submitted to the CDD for review. Shouldn't that go to the town attorney? I was kind of confused on that.
This is a standard condition of approval that we include with mixed-use projects. If the Community Development Director believes that it needs to go to the attorney, she's able to ask for assistance in that.
Okay. Number 39. I'm just curious about putting construction signs up. So it says no temporary signage. So when I was building and I would put signs up, it was more for the neighbors if there was an issue or something they knew who to reach out to and, and to call. So I wasn't sure if there was some way to at least let the public know who to call if there was an issue?
This condition of approval is consistent with the Development Code requirements for temporary sign permits. There are certain temporary signs that are exempt. So if they are proposing a sign that is exempt from the requirements of a temporary sign permit, then that would still apply.
They'd have to apply for it, though, for an exemption. So he can't just put a fence up and then put a sign up that says Lamperty Construction?
If it qualifies for an exemption, they don't need to ask for an exemption. It would just be an exempt sign that they could put up.
Got it. Okay. And then number 49, please. Oh, wouldn't this be included in the as-built? They want to, you guys want a separate landscape plan as an as-built as opposed to the building's as-built? Wouldn't that just be one set of plans?
When we have these landscape approvals, there's a hold placed for planning inspection also. So planning will go out and confirm that the landscape was installed per plan.
I mean, what typically happens is you'll get an initial design that's submitted. We review that before we issue the building permit, but then something changes in the field.
Right.
As we know, and so we want to maintain that flexibility. It's just that as stuff changes, we want to capture that with the final version.
So they couldn't just set in, they couldn't submit one set of plans for all the as-builds?
I mean, generally, I rarely see a landscaping plan that's the same as it was when it first came in.
Yeah, no, I get that.
Yeah, so, and we don't really require full as-built drawings for construction. So whatever they submit to us, unless they've done some major modifications during construction, will be the ones that are closed out with the permit.
Okay. That's it for me. Thank you.
You mentioned the condition of approval, you're getting a review from all the easement holders. Is that the list of easement holders on number 11, condition of approval?
This list is not necessarily for the easement holders. This is another standard condition of approval that is placed on pretty much all projects. However, the PUD and Engineering Division are, they do happen to be listed here, yes.
Are they the two, only two easement holders?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's that multi-use trail on the south and southeast sides?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the Engineering Division?
Yeah, that would be Engineering.
Okay, and then, so the plan in the presentation showed the trail being moved, correct? Because the current trail, trail moves, you know, passes through what is going to become the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Will that new trail be the same width as before?
They haven't proposed any changes to it. So I, I'm not sure of the exact width right now, but we can always ask the applicant if they are proposing any changes.
Yeah, it likely would be the same. I think it's eight feet out there. Our current standard is 10 feet, so we can discuss it with the applicant.
That's fine. And then I noticed that the new plan shows the new trail actually going through what is today a different parking lot, an adjoining parcel. Yeah, if you go back up, so just go up a little bit more. So on the right side there, you'll see that asphalt parking. It's actually coming from the parcel to the right here. The new path will go through that, and it's shown, it might be shown on a different drawing because this one doesn't show the new path location.
It's on the landscape plan.
Yeah, it's on the landscape plan. Thank you, Mitch.
You're welcome.
Commissioner, is that, is your question if it's allowed to go through the adjacent parcel?
As the other adjacent property owner, is, are they the same property owner? Are they in agreement? I'm just curious if that's...
That's, I'm trying to get my bearings on, so you're talking about on the east side
Yes.
of the parcel. When it gets realigned, it then continues on to where it currently goes, correct?
Yes, yes. But where it's, that new site, you can barely see it. I can see it on my screen, not really on that screen over there, but there's a dotted line showing where the existing asphalt parking is, and it's actually parking for the adjoining parcel.
So Chelsea, can you bring up just an aerial view? So the, the trail is like sandwiched between the parking for the Pioneer Commerce Center on that adjacent parcel and the ones off of Trails End, so there's already an existing development out there where it's, it's pretty much sandwiched right in between the two sites within a public access easement.
Right, that's the current path of the trail, right? But it's being moved.
It's still on the applicant's property.
So that, that existing, you see that, that very tiny bit of parking on the right there? Yeah, it's being moved there.
That's trespassing onto the applicant's property right now.
It is. Okay.
Yes.
Got it.
So they're moving it back to the property line.
Thank you. That answers that question.
Okay.
Yeah. So that little bit of parking is...
Thank you, Mitch.
You're welcome.
And then the last question I have for the trail is, will the trail remain accessible during construction?
We'll work with the applicant to make sure that it maintains public accessibility.
Okay.
It likely will not be the same, obviously, as they're removing and replacing the asphalt, but we'll do the best we can to maintain functionality throughout construction.
People to go around or something. Okay, great. No further questions.
Mr. Taylor?
Not Kaufman?
I'm just curious, excuse me. Uh, there's, there was some discussion in the, in the package about Caltrans and Interstate 80 and having like a distance between buildings and like a scenic highway. Is that going to be maintained? It seems very close to the border.
Yeah, the project is consistent with those required setbacks for the scenic corridor as it relates to Interstate 80.
So they're not going to come in and suddenly object?
No. The project was routed to them for review, and they did not have comment.
That, the setback was reduced on a couple of those parcels. I believe your staff report listed that. Isn't that correct?
That's the 2005 approval. So the scenic corridor standards were amended slightly to apply to these properties in particular due to their smaller size, and the project is consistent with that 2005 approval, including those requirements for scenic corridor.
There's no other questions for the staff. I don't have any questions for the staff right now. My questions were included in the presentation already. Thank you. So let's move on to deliberation. I'd like to know how we're feeling about this. Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, it's my first time. All right, so now I'm opening the meeting to public comment. If you have a public comment, please come over to the microphone here so we can hear who you are, state your name, and you will have three minutes. There's a timer right up here that you can watch. When you're done, please fill out a comment form and hand it to Kaylee.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brendan Riley. I'm an architect. I've had the pleasure of doing a couple of projects with Joe and Michaela Lamperty. I'm here to voice my support for their project. It's a good fit. Just reviewing the staff report, I see that it's all consistent basically down the line. I know there were some questions, but Truckee needs to make progress towards our industrial square footages, our industrial areas, and so supporting a building like this aligns with those needs, and Lamperty Construction is just a great business, so really happy to support them.
Thank you, Brendan. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak about this project? Seeing no others, I'm going to close public comment, and now I'm going to open deliberation. So I'd love to hear from my fellow commissioners how you feel about this applicant's project.
I think it looks great. I think you did a great job. Jason, good job.
I'm glad to see that there's a little bit of housing in there. That's good. Might be a bit noisy next to the highway, but I appreciate that they added that in.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it's consistent where it needs to be. It provides a little bit of housing, kind of meets that industrial and manufacturing zoning of the area, so...
No concerns for me. That's great.
Could we put the motion up, please?
I have one, one comment. I also think it's a nice-looking project. I've been out to the site and looked at the site from I-80, or at least tried to. There's some snow there now. It looks great. I think it fits in with the neighborhood, provides residences. They might be a little noisy. That is addressed in the conditions, and of course, if, maybe you, you know what you're getting into if you move in there, perhaps. I do have a concern about the condition requiring review by the Planning Commission for any of the new tenants. Is this pretty common that we would have to review individual tenants in a larger facility?
It's not necessarily a typical condition of approval. However, it is a condition of the 2005 tentative map, or excuse me, excuse, the plan development.
Probably best left in there then. Would anyone care to make a motion regarding this?
I'm going to move that we find the project exempt from additional environmental review pursuant to Section 15183 of the SEQA guidelines and move to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023-03 as amended, approving the development permit, minor use permit, and sign plan.
Can I, I just noticed a typo on my slide. It's Commission Resolution 2025-03?
Oh.
I lost two years.
And I missed that.
Second?
Back to the future. And move to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2025-03 as amended.
Second.
Point of order, does this recommendation need to, do we need to mention in particular that there's an additional condition?
If you want to mention that that's the amendment that's as amended, that's, that's fine.
As long as it's covered.
Yes. Yes, it will be included.
Chair Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Claren?
Yep.
Commissioner Tufts?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Aye.
All right, we got one thing done. Moving on to Item 8.2. Here we go. Application number 2024-134-MPA-ZC, the Artis Lofts. First thing, we're going to have a presentation from Yumi. Congratulations and thank you.
Good evening. For those who I haven't met yet, I'm Yumi Don, and I'm a principal planner here, and will be presenting today the Artis Loft Rail Yard Master Plan Amendment and Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation zoning clearance. The project we're looking at today is located within the plan area of the, plan area land use designation of the general plan. It's zoned downtown master plan, and that master plan is the rail yard master plan. And what we're, what we're looking at today as one component of your, the review tonight, is the downtown extension district, which is located within the rail yard master plan, and it's the area highlighted in red. And the downtown extension is a zoning district, basically, within the rail yard master plan. And then, the second component that we're talking about today is a parcel within the downtown extension district, which is Artis Lofts, which is the existing building located between Church Street and Donner Pass Road, east of the new Truckee Way roundabout. And just to give you a little background, the governing document for this area is the Truckee Rail Yard Master Plan, and it was originally adopted in 2009 and amended in 2016. And at the same time that the master plan was adopted, the develop, a development agreement was adopted. And a development agreement is a contract between the master developer at the time, Truckee Development Associates, and the town where additional public benefits are provided in exchange for development terms in surety. So, at the time the development agreement was adopted, it included the Affordable Housing Plan, Parking Management Plan, and Streetscape Plan. So, all of those, these documents govern this rail yard master plan area. And the vision of the master plan is to support the creation of a strong connection between the rail yard and the historic core, developing the rail yard master plan area holistically as a mixed-use development that supports a greater diversity and intensity of activities, including retail, restaurant, local services, and entertainment uses. The master plan supports development of an eclectic mix of building types and uses within an attractive pedestrian-oriented neighborhood. And the key goals to achieve this vision is to encourage vibrant and economically sustainable mixed-use redevelopment, provide a connected community with places that are easily accessible, create an enjoyable public realm with a strong sense of place that complements Truckee's unique historical, unique character, and encourage an efficient use of resources and improved environmental and community health. The crux of today's project proposal is to allow, the applicants are requesting to allow Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation to occupy the ground floor of the Artis Lofts. And from TTCF's website, Truckee, Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation, they identified that a community foundation is a philanthropic organization dedicated to improving the lives and environment of a particular area, in this case, the Tahoe Truckee region. The Artis Loft is an existing building. It's one of the, it's the only, one of the only ones down in the rail yard currently. It's a four-story, 77-unit affordable housing project with, which was approved with three retail spaces on the west, southwest corner of the building. It was approved in 2016, and the project was amended in 2018, and the construction was completed in 2021. And that retail space was, is approximately 3,500 square feet, and it remains unimproved. There was no TIs that were provided. There was no construction of the interior. It's vacant and unused. TTCF is proposing to move their headquarters to this location, and they're envisioning three uses of this space. They're proposing a gathering space, which is approximately 2,000 square feet. It's that area in green, which is a non-commercial flexible meeting room, which can be for conferences, meetings, just general casual gatherings, classroom setting, et cetera, and potential, potentially, they could host community events. And that, those events could be from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., maybe with some extending beyond 10:00 p.m. The other two areas, the pink and the blue, are identified as office-type uses. They're calling the facilitator's bullpen and organizer's office. They're mostly an office use, and they would mostly function during normal business hours. They're also proposing to use the outdoor space right in front of the building along Donner Pass Road for private, on the, on their private property for additional gatherings and meeting area. The rail yard master plan has a table, 5-1, which identifies allowed uses and what the permit requirements are for every use that's allowed within the rail yard master plan. Currently, there isn't a use that captures the, what TTCF is envisioning for the project. They have a gathering space. They're an office. All of this is identified as part, it's a, there's a mix of uses that are part of the TTCF's vision. The rail yard master plan land use table does not have any of these items that, or they don't capture this particular mix of uses, particularly the gathering place. And then, the office use, which you'll see highlighted here in red, is a permitted use within the downtown extension district. However, you see that footnote four. It, that footnote four prohibits within 30 feet depth of ground floor building frontages on the primary street, in this case, Donner Pass Road, such uses as an office. And that's primarily because of rail yard, the rail yard master plan policy to encourage ground floor uses that attract pedestrian activity, rather, and an office use is not seen as a pedestrian-attracting use within the rail yard master plan. So, right now, the rail yard master plan does not allow for office use in this location, and then it doesn't really recognize a gathering place as a allowed use within the rail yard master plan. And then, the applicants also wanted to host events open to the public, which are, is also not really captured within any particular use in the table. At the October, at the second meeting in October, the council was discussing their strategic work plan, and they considered a request from TTCF to expedite a rail yard master plan amendment to allow the use, TTCF's use of the Artis Loft's ground floor retail space, since it wasn't allowed in the rail yard master plan. Town Council supported this idea and directed staff to allow TTCF to occupy the space as it aligns with council priorities, but directed us a staff to keep the amendment narrow, to limit the potential of future asks from private developers. So, to address TTCF's needs and then to also heed council's direction to keep it very narrow, we created a very specific definition that is catered towards TTCF's needs, and that, we created a new use that we would add to the rail yard master plan, and that new definition, that new use is, we were calling it a nonprofit office and gathering place, which is defined as an indoor non-commercial use for offices and small public or private community events and meetings operated by a nonprofit organization located on the ground floor of a building with a 100% affordable housing development project. For purposes of this definition, at least 2/3 of the total floor area for the project is required to be dedicated to the 100% affordable housing development. Small community events and meetings are limited to 120 people. Outdoor seating is permitted as an accessory to the primary use. And this use does not include commercial entertainment and commercial recreation uses, which can be defined under other terms that are identified within the rail yard master plan. So, working with the applicant, staff created this very specific definition that meets TTCF's needs and is proposing adding this to the glossary within the rail yard master plan and adding it to that table 5-1 as a permitted use within the downtown extension district. As noted here, you can see that there's no footnote four, so they would not be prohibited per that footnote that we discussed. No other amendments are proposed to the rail yard master plan, and these are the only two items that we're proposing today. So, in order to fill this request, there are two items that are before you today, two land use entitlements. The rail yard master plan amendment, and that's to create the new land, nonprofit office and gatherings place use and definition, and allow it within the downtown extension district. And this is a legislative act, which we're creating new rules that we're adding to the town's adopted documents, which is, and this is wholly at the discretion of the town council, with consideration of your recommendation tonight to the town council. If you decide to move forward with, or if you and the town council move forward with the zoning, with the rail yard master plan amendment, then we're also asking that you consider a zoning clearance, so a change of use or an establishment of a new use in the ground floor of the Artis Loft, to allow TTCF this new permitted use in the ground floor of the Artis Loft. And as part of the zoning clearance, you would review it for consistency with the master plan and any other applicable standards. And, and I just want to note that typically, a zoning clearance, as we discussed in the previous item, is usually done at the staff level, reviewed at the staff level, but since all concurrent projects are reviewed by the highest review authority, that's why it's coming before you and then the town council, since it's related to the rail yard master plan amendment. Tonight, commission's role is to review the proposed amendment to ensure consistency with the purpose and intent of the master plan. If the amendment can be supported, then you, we're asking you to review the zoning clearance for consistency with the master plan, including proposed amendments and applicable development code requirements. And then, depending on what your, regardless of what your recommendation is, if you make a recommendation tonight, we ask that you forward it to the town council. And now, with the zoning clearance, we're reviewing TTCF's use. If we decide that the rail yard master plan is something you are recommending approval of, there are a few items that we are bringing up for you to consider to ensure consistency with the rail yard master plan as proposed. First is to ensure that the use definition meets the needs of TTCF. Since it was catered directly for TTCF's needs, we have found that it is 100% affordable housing part, project. It is 2/3, the 2/3 of the building is affordable housing, and then they're, they are proposing 120 person, person maximum for the event size. There is a, we are requiring that they meet the general town noise ordinances, nothing special, prohibiting outdoor seating after 10:00 p.m. to ensure compliance with the noise ordinance, and then prohibiting outdoor amplified noise. And that's to ensure consistency and compatibility with existing residential uses and the neighboring, future neighboring uses in the future. One potential environmental impact staff thought might happen with a new, this new use is potentially traffic, so we asked our on-call traffic consultant, LSE, to conduct a trip generation study to see what the impact is based off of the new use versus old uses, and they found that the use, that the impacts were very minimal. So, that environmental concern is, we no longer have that environmental concern. And then, the one item that we are asking for your consideration within your staff report is to talk about parking. As we discussed previously, the rail yard master plan, or there is a rail yard parking management plan as part of the development agreement, and that looks at, that manages the common shared pool of parking in the parking district, which the master developer built 400 spaces in the parking district that are publicly accessible, but they are in a pool that's available to developers on a first-come, first-served basis as they develop. So, if a new building comes in, you could say, we need 20 spaces. Those 20 spaces are pulled from the bank, the matrix that we keep on file, so that we say, you no longer have, you now have only 376 spaces available for future development of projects. The parking management plan also includes specific requirements for residential and hotels uses, and has a broad calculation for all other uses, which is three spaces, parking spaces per 1,000 square feet. Outdoor uses are identified as being determined by land use permit. As you know, if you, we do move forward with the amendment, the nonprofit office and gathering place is a new use, so it's not necessarily identified within these three items, so that's why we're asking you to weigh in today if additional parking should be required for the proposed events. And I just wanted to note that the Artis Loft was required to provide 118 parking spaces. 22 were provided on-site, and 96 were allocated from the shared parking pool, and 12 of those spaces were from, for the retail space. We also considered other standards that we have, just for reference. The development code, LSE's trip generation, they kind of gave us a larger number of 40 to 50 parking spaces that were generated with public assembly type use. We also considered whether or not, what would happen if the site drew 120 people for an event, and the rail yard was built out, and it was during, after 5:00 o'clock, and when, suppose, there's a lot of pedestrian activity that could create some parking conflict. We also identified that day-to-day, the park, the use is mostly an office. There are some occasional but regular gatherings, but it's mostly an office. And the parking management plan's goal is to seek, is to ensure sufficient but not excessive parking, and typical parking practice is to ensure parking supply meets average parking demands, not necessarily to meet the largest need on the busiest day of the year. So, that's what we considered. The condition as written in your staff report and resolution is to maintain the 12 parking spaces that were identified for the retail use as part of the previous Artis Loft project to use that three per 1,000 general other uses calculation number provided in the parking management plan. Other options you could consider for parking is to allow the, as I noted, to allow the condition as written, require more parking based on the one of, one of the above calculations or some other calculation we can find, require smaller events, so less than 120 people, or require a parking study to determine what the appropriate amount is. Whatever the amount is beyond the 12, it would likely just be taken out of the parking pool and wouldn't actually generate physical parking spaces. We have received a few public comments. We received five public comments from members of the board and the interim director of Excellence in Education, supporting the amendment and TTCF zoning clearance. Mountain Area Preservation does not support the amendment and zoning clearance as proposed. They would like the staff and the applicant to consider other changes, including opening the space for other nonprofits and small businesses requiring additional parking, making space available for a certain number of days per year to be hosted by other entities, and accommodate activated uses. TDMA, the Truckee Downtown Merchants Association, does not support the amendment and zoning clearance, concerned about, they're concerned about the potential impact to the pedestrian experience and the vision of the rail yard master plan area, and they asked the applicant to consider using the funding to create, that they have received for the site, to create an incubator project to support ground floor startup businesses in the Artis Loft instead. Andy Keith, a business owner, supports the amendment and zoning clearance, and then another member of the public, Beatrice, supports the amendment and zoning clearance. As part of the environmental review, we took a look at the rail yard master plan EIR, which was adopted in 2009, and an addendum was accepted in 2015 with the new rail yard master plan. As I noted, we thought traffic may be the only item that may cause some concern. We found that, that new, that the trip generation is not increased, it's minimal compared to similar, to the allowed uses in the rail yard master plan, so we had no concerns with the, any new impacts based on the change. We're also, with the zoning clearance, where you see that they're not proposing any new developments, so there would be no impact, physical impact to the environment in that regard. So, based on that, staff is proposing that the project be exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15183 and find it consistent with the rail yard master plan. So, tonight, staff's recommendation, based off all of that, is to adopt Resolution 2025-02 and recommend to the town council to, to the following actions, to determine the project exempt from SEQA per Sections 15183 and Public Resources Code 21166, and approve the Artis Loft Rail Yard Master Plan amendments and TTCF zoning clearance based on the findings and conditions of approval. And as noted here, there are some minor grammatical changes that we'll be making in the resolution as well. As always, there are alternatives to consider. You may continue the public hearing to a date and time certain if you wish. You could request additional information from the applicant and/or staff. You can recommend changes to the amendments and/or zoning clearance. You could recommend denial of the amendments and/or zoning clearance, or you could require additional environmental review if you see fit. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant team is here, and they do have a presentation as well.
We typically tend to have questions that overlap among the staff members and the applicant members, and since they're an applicant presentation, I'd like to go ahead and do that next, and then move to questions if everyone's fine with that.
John, can you press your button, please?
Commissioners, good evening. Thank you. My name's John Cicerone, and together with Ozzy Yosefi and Cyrus Yosefi, we're the owners of Truckee Artis Loft. I'd like to thank staff for their very complete presentation. I think it's a very elegant and innovative solution, and I'm here tonight to please ask you to vote yes in support of staff's recommendation with no modifications. I've got a couple of slides I'd like to talk to you to explain why, from a builder's owner perspective, it's a fit for tall, and it's a fit for the rail yards. And then, I'd like to invite TTCF up to say a few words and talk to you about all the wonderful things that they're going to do. This slide was taken in the fall of this past year before the first snow, and you can see the new development in the lumberyards. You can see our gorgeous warehouse Artis Loft building, but then there's absolutely nothing else. None of the 100,000 square feet of retail that was supposed to have been built, except for our 3,000 square feet, has been built. And I think that's why, even though we've talked to over 75 prospective tenants, and I actually signed two leases, one of I actually signed two leases, one of which even submitted to the building department, but they both ultimately backed out, it's been incredibly hard for us to lease. And I'm talking to you as an experienced building owner. We have over 40 projects in our portfolio. Several of them have thriving retail on the ground floor with affordable housing above, and they succeed because there's established urban development around the projects. It drives the traffic for the retail. And I'd like to call out one building in particular, our warehouse artist loft. It's on the 10th street corridor in downtown Sacramento. It's the inspiration that Rick and Nancy Holliday saw and fell in love with, and that Ally Yosefi, who made warehouse to the success it is, wanted to bring to Truckee. But that building not only has retail on the ground level, we have a public market with multiple retail. But it works because the R Street is an already existing thriving corridor. It's also a transit oriented development that has rail that drives it. And when you look at the slide, there's none of that there, absolutely nothing. So when Stacy came to me a while ago and said they had an interest in the space, I was ecstatic. I was ecstatic because this thing's been vacant for too long and it needs to get leased. And if they don't lease it, how much longer is it going to be vacant? And it's just a very practical consideration. And then when they explained to me what their community benefit outreach gathering does, I thought that would just be a total fit with the rail yards because it's going to help energize the space and it's going to help advance the rail yards. And the more that they explained to me about what that community benefit outreach meant, could I have the next slide, please? The more I thought that it was a real compliment to TALL. And the reason for that is that most people think of TALL as affordable housing. And we are. That's that little blue bubble up in the left-hand part of the slide. I've got 76 units. It's 100% affordable and will be for the foreseeable future. It's a thriving success. I've got 180 people now on my waitlist. I mean, it's phenomenal. And we do everything we can to rent to the locals. About 80% of our tenants are locals. But TALL is really much more than that. And that's what I'm trying to communicate by the rest of the slide. 90% of our tenants are artists. We've got musicians who jam, practice, and entertain. We have an onsite art studio, that picture in the lower left corner where the artists produce their art. We've dedicated 850 square feet to an art gallery where they show their art, usually on Thursdays and Saturdays. And that was the vision that Rick and Nancy Holliday and Ally had, and that's the vision that we've made happen. And that's why I think TALL really at heart is vibrant artist hub. And that's why TTCF will enhance our engagement that we've already started in the community. And I think in particular TTCF's focus on their community benefit, something that they've been doing for 25 years, complements our mission as an artist community. And that's my fundamental reason why I think it's just a win-win. It's a win for TALL, it's a win for rail yards, and I really encourage you to vote yes. Could you turn the slides off, please? That concludes my presentation. Before I ask TTCF up here, I'd just like to make a couple of comments about some of the letters and issues regarding parking. The management plan in the rail yards for parking is some 27 pages long. We've been operating under it since we opened. It works fine. Don't mess with the parking. It works. There were some comments about adding additional conditions which would restrict the use of TTCF. I'd also ask you not to do that. Don't hamstring TTCF. If they're good ideas, they will most likely implement them. But that's something TTCF should decide. And when I saw that, I thought it would, a little bit similar to, if I were a restaurant before you, would you tell me to sell seafood? Or would you tell me to sell steak? Probably not. So I would ask that you don't modify for any additional conditions. And I think there was also a comment about an incubator. And even though the idea of a business incubator may be a good idea, TALL is just simply the wrong place. And if you want to invite me up here later, I'd be happy to extrapolate on that. And with that, let me turn it over to TTCF. Thank you for listening.
Are we on? Excellent. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Kelly Carroll. I am the board chair of Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation. I have several of my esteemed board members in attendance here, so hopefully I don't screw up too badly or they'll have my head. We also have a lot of staff here. And Stacy, to my right, and I are going to do this presentation as a little joint venture. So next slide, please. TTCF, for those who aren't familiar with us, we've been around since the mid 90s, and we have a big mission that's highlighted in here on the screen that I won't bother to read. But we do a lot of things for a lot of people and a lot of groups, and we touch a lot of folks' lives in a very positive way. Next slide, please. These are some of the many different things that we have going. I don't know how the staff keeps track of all these things. It's hard as heck to do. But we, as I said earlier, do a lot of things for a lot of people and touch a lot of folks in a lot of ways. And these little icons show you some of those. So next slide, please. There's the board. Ignore the guy on the top left. The rest of the group is wonderful. Next slide, please. And this, this is the heart of the organization. This is our workhorse staff who do amazing things, and I can never give them enough praise. And they are led by an amazing leader who I'm going to turn this over to. So thank you all for your consideration.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you, and thanks you, me, and staff for all your support over the last six months almost. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a window into the way that we believe that the TTCF mission can activate the rail yard and help extend energy from the downtown commercial core. Next slide, please. And this is just one of the ways that we show up. And to just give you a flavor, in 2008, we launched a Speak Your Peace campaign. It's a, it was a campaign for civility in public discord. And we show up in a lot of different ways. And some of the things that might be a part of our community, you didn't realize that we had leaders before my time, before this board's time, who are involved in positive impact for the region. Next slide, please. And we manage a lot of different stakeholders, and some of them cross over. But this is a page right from our stakeholder engagement strategy in which we acknowledge different, not only donor bases within the organization, but community partners out there. Next slide, please. And so again, I'm not going to go over all of our different programs, but each of our programs have different engagement strategies. Our Forest Futures Salon last week attracted over 80 people to talk about stewarding our collective home and what it means to be stewards of our place. Next slide. Community Collaborative meets every month for a resource sharing meeting, and it represents over 45 different health and human service organizations. That means our safety net. And they've been doing this actually since longer than TTCF has been an organization. These are individuals who serve our community directly, and they get together to talk about things that are happening in our community and how to best resource our individuals and families and share across not only the nonprofit but public agency network. Next slide. Tahoe 50 is a private giving club that involves skiing and really fun experiences. And so we also attract a high net worth in, you know, donor base to our gatherings. Oftentimes, when we bring them in places like perhaps the downtown rail yard, they see empty lots and think creatively about what they might invest in. Next slide, please. Some of you were engaged in our mountain housing council work. That was 29 different institutions that came together to accelerate housing solutions. And the results coming out of those meetings were three social enterprises, a number of programs and policies that changed across Nevada County, Placer County, Town of Truckee. We really built kind of a network of leaders who are willing to pick up the phone and work together on different innovations. Next slide. And then we have a women's group called the Queen of Hearts. Some of you in the room might actually be members. Thank you so much. And we bring them together at the minimum when we explore our grant making with that group and have other different engagement strategies planned this next year. Next slide. And then we do capacity building and training. And so we have an on-the-verge leadership program that focuses on leadership development in our nonprofit sector so that we can focus on our workforce, grow them. We have a community belonging series, as well as a nonprofit board governance series. And all these different engagements require our team to either locate here for a meeting or at the airport or at the rec center. And so watching my team schlepp around and try and figure out the AV, figure out the seating chart, figure out all these things, and then not have the benefit of the core team of TTCF family and friends that can help them, has been one of the challenges in the evolution of our office experience. And then when I, I want to highlight here that our office has changed significantly. We don't have kind of the need for cubicle land anymore. We don't have the need for everybody having a desk and a computer because most people are hybrid, and most of our staff are actually out in the community at coffee shops. And so a lot of the design is to create our own kind of internal feel like a coffee shop so that they can be at a home base and benefit from not only being in the space with each other, but a consistent location where we want to gather. And so we did a snapshot of our community gatherings over the last six months just to give you a window into that. And we've hosted over 32 since the time we have indicated to the town our intentions of occupying Truckee Artist Lofts. And in those 32 gatherings, we have about 1,200 people, so that averages out somewhere in the neighborhood of like 50. I'm not really good at math, but somewhere there, somebody can pull out a calculator. Our CFO is here. Okay, next slide. And we know we can do this because we actually had a building, a donor helped us lease the space on the corner of Old Gateway Center, the shopping center. And we did a pilot project to test this model, and we called it the Annex. And we literally took our lives in our own hands as we were schlepping our glasses and, you know, food across the Donner Pass Road. But next slide. We had amazing arts and culture experiences. One was called a pachotchka, and we would invite local experts on all sorts of different topics to come and present. And so that really reinforces like meaningful conversations at the community level, highlighting the people within our community. And they were always oversubscribed. Next slide. Another series we really had fun with was called Unlikeminded because we think when you get a room full of like-minded people, real change doesn't necessarily happen. It's when you have unlike-minded people who have different opinions about what should happen, and we can poke holes and figure out like how to get there, that real solutions happen at the community level. And so, next slide, please. And then I've already kind of highlighted, our Forest Futures work has been a significant contribution to this region over the last three and a half years with funding, but it goes back seven years as we really learned about what was happening in our forest and how we as community members could be well-informed and prepared. Next slide. And then the board governance series. We believe the stronger the nonprofit is, is stronger the board. And that when you have a good, strong board, you have a good, strong nonprofit. I'm kind of mixing up, a little bit nervous right now. But all of these nonprofits that we serve have community members who believe in those missions, and we want them to show up prepared to serve their community and those missions. And the stronger our nonprofit sector is in this region, the stronger our community. And we see those benefits over and over. So many of these things that we're talking about are not new ideas. These kinds of series and activities, we've been doing for over 10 years. So it's, it's not, oh, wouldn't it be great if we did this at this location? It is, oh my gosh, we've been doing it and we really need to stabilize it. And we think that this could bring light and love to a housing project that so many of us were involved in. Not only did the organizing behind the Truckee Artist Loft specifically as part of the rail yard come out of almost a rallying cry at mountain housing council, that this was low-hanging fruit if we could just bring the Truckee Artist Lofts to fruition, but then it activated a number of us funders to show up to the table and provide some financing that then made the tax credits happen. So we have been here along with so many other community leaders trying to make this project successful. But the reality is, as long as it stays empty on that bottom ground floor, it continues to have kind of a pall over the success of that project because people don't understand what's happening there. And they think those people don't belong here, or they came from other locations. And we believe that our presence in that space is going to bring the community, not only to just validate this is a successful housing project that we want more of, and we want those tenants to feel a part of our community, but then it also provides us with a place for these gatherings and these community members who work with us on a variety of different things. So I think that was the last slide. You already saw this, but that's our vision. And the role of philanthropy. So the role of philanthropy is unique to public funding, right? Public funding is taxpayer dollars, and we have to be very careful with all of it. But it's a different way of using money to make things work or make things pencil. So we find ourselves coming to the table looking for ways to solve problems and use philanthropy to make things pencil. And our commitment with our philanthropy, not only on the front end of this project, but now on the back end of the project so that it gets complete and we can all signal success, is the role that philanthropy can play here right now while the market isn't inviting to a new retail or commercial tenant, while there aren't additional investments yet to really fill out the full vision of the whole rail yard. And so we believe that we can play that role in this transition moment, knowing that the success will be more buildings, more parking problems, more traffic and people who are extending that experience from the core. But for now, let us at least start bringing some energy and some activation to it so that that can happen. And eventually TTCF won't be there. This is not our permanent home. We don't see it as a permanent home. But right now, we feel strongly that we have a role to play to solve a kind of an unfinished promise to our community. Okay, thank you. Hope I didn't go over too long. Thank you.
Thank you. Now to the rest of the commissioners. Do you have any clarifying questions for either the applicant or staff? I'm going to start at the send again with you, Mitch.
I'm going to wait for deliberation.
I do have, I have some questions. Okay. For staff, where is the outdoor seating envisioned to be?
It'd be on the south side of the building. So you see this red box?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's just along the building frontage.
And how many could be possibly seated out there?
I think I counted, it was, it wasn't that many. I think each of these boxes show a two top.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. So this is like, kind of going back, but in the, you know, I think going back six months ago, initially the applicant requested to be defined as a membership organization facility. Can you explain more about why this project didn't meet that definition?
It's primarily because they wanted to host public events.
Really?
Yeah.
So it's the event component. So it's interesting, like, if they hadn't had the event component, that would have maybe been easier to fit into that definition. But by adding the public event component, which is actually driving more foot traffic, we had to create a new definition?
I think it could have been, well, I think when we discussed it with the applicant, we talked about, he talked about the chamber of commerce being a similar use that's a membership organization. But when we looked at that, we typically treat membership or that type of use, a chamber of commerce, like an office use. And I think that those are more similar to an office use than what we are envisioning under the definition of membership facility, organization. So I think we still would consider it an office use, more so than a membership organization.
Okay. And this is, you know, just from my understanding, we had to do the whole master plan amendment thing because we're creating a new use definition and adding it. If, just hypothetically, if we'd gone back eight months and instead we were like, let, maybe we'll just tweak this membership organization's definition instead, would that have also required a master plan amendment? Or could that have been done without the master plan amendment?
If we wanted to tweak the definition, we would have had to change the rail yard master plan.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so the definition that is proposed is very narrow in many, many ways, right? But one of them is this requirement to be in a 100% affordable housing project. But one of them is this requirement to be in a 100% affordable housing project. Are there any other projects that we know of right now that could be 100% affordable in the rail yard?
No.
Okay. And then I noticed the limit on meeting sizes also in the definition. Is that normally in a use definition?
Not typically. No.
Okay. Thank you. And then I noticed that this is recommended to only be added to the, this one downtown extension zone in rail yard. Would it have also fit, like, could it fit in the other zones?
Potentially. It could potentially go into the industrial heritage zone.
Right.
But not in the area.
Not the housing one.
Not the Trout Creek one. And then it really can't go within the, within the rail yard balloon track, even though it's downtown extension, because residential is not permitted there.
Okay. And then there's some public comments, like making recommendations like, oh, what if they could use this as space as like a pop-up for like food and beverage or retailer, even temporarily? Would they be allowed to do that, given this definition? Or would that be prohibited?
I think if they wanted to establish themselves as an incubator space, that's kind of consistently, not necessarily on a one-off basis, we could do that through a zoning clearance. It would be probably more considered retail. And it'd be something consistent with existing land use definitions.
Got it. Okay, got it. All right. Makes sense. And then what if they wanted to like, I'm just making things up. What if they wanted to do like coworking, they let other nonprofits or member nonprofits use the space and maybe they receive a little revenue for that? Would they be allowed to do that?
I think they can use it as a nonprofit working space, similar to how they use it. If it was a coworking space for the public, I think that'd be more just straight up office and would not be permitted with that footnote four.
Okay. Got it. I think that was all my questions. Thank you.
We can always come back if we need to. Amy, anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, I think possibly for the applicant team. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding everything correctly. You're proposing to use the space as Truckee, Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation? And then would it be available to other local nonprofits? And then if so, how will you handle the programming of the space? Would it be you? Would it be the building owner, the property manager? How would that work?
The way we're proposing it is that it's fully our use, but we have relationships with 60-plus grantees and nonprofits in our community. And they're, they are our partners. And so we will program and curate that space. It wouldn't be outside of our organization who would be approving those programs. John, did I jump in too fast?
No, no. No, not at all, Stacy. I just wanted to add, as a property owner, we would sign one lease. We haven't signed a lease yet. And our one lease would be with TTCF. So anything they would choose to do within the purview of the lease, we would certainly support. Thank you.
Thank you. And then one additional question. I see there's not like a full kitchen being proposed. And I know refreshments and other things often go hand in hand with these types of, you know, community events. Is, what is proposed? Does that meet your needs? Or would you be partnering with other kind of local businesses to satisfy those needs? Or what would that look like?
It is intentional not to have a full-blown commercial kitchen. And we do believe that it will meet our needs, but there might be some evening events that we cater with local caterers and things like that.
Great. Thank you.
Amy? I have a couple of questions for the applicant. So it sounds, it wasn't 100% clear to me your, TTCF's offices will be there full-time? So there would be full-time office use in at least the area three is shown on there? Okay. And could you tell me about, thank you for your question about the outdoor space, because I wanted to know about that as well. Can you tell me about your vision for how that will be used?
So we really want to be symbiotic with the artist lofts. And so we see the opportunity when they have maybe a gallery night of having, maybe there's a book reading or something that night at the, at the, at the space. And so maybe we do a gathering about one of the artists. We, we've kind of resisted all the brainstorming that could possibly go into this space because it's, it's really exciting and we have a lot of thoughts about that. But of course, we want to do it within the purview of what's allowable. But that might be one way that we have outdoor space is we, you know, have a reception after the, the gallery night or during the gallery night. We also kind of want to challenge ourselves during Truckee Thursday to be that extension and host so that people have an opportunity to come. And, you know, we, we think about the Sacramento Artist Lofts quite a bit and how they are the heartbeat of that, that, that part of town. And so we want to create experiences like that that would be complimentary to the existing businesses and also really activate that space so that somebody might walk down there and look in the gallery and then think about the next, you know, building that could go up, like the movie theater.
So based on your presentation, it sounds like about, you have an evening meeting at least once a week? Is that what you, is that consistent?
I mean, it's like two or three times a month.
Okay.
Yep.
And then during the days?
During the days, we have any number of meetings that could be 12 people to 45 people. And those happen about four or five times a week. And then we want our team to feel like this is a place that they can come and meet somebody for coffee and just use our own coffee maker and still have a space to sit. And so their meetings often are community members and other nonprofits that could use that. And the, the facilitator's bullpen is really also set up for those facilitation experiences so that it's kind of like the behind the curtain so that they can organize. So anyway.
Carl, I have a couple of questions.
Go for it.
Can I, Stacy? How many employees are going to be working there during the day on an average day?
So we have four full-time office employees that will be running that shop, kind of, and making sure that it's, it's clean and, and it's our administrative. And then we have, the rest of our team is hybrid. And so they'll come in for meetings, but oftentimes their quiet work is done at home. And then our programmatic team is the team that'll be using primarily the gathering space. So there's 14, 14 of us right now with four of us who will be full-time onsite. And then the rest will be kind of calibrated as, as the calendar demands.
So are there people that, are there like a meeting a day? Is there people coming in and out?
Yes. And, you know, we often will have meetings with our nonprofit partners. And so they will be coming in and out as well. Yeah.
I'm probably more for John. What is the landlord's contribution to TIs for a new, if a new business was to come in to your, to that spot, a restaurant, since that's what you brought up? What's the allowances for TIs from, from your operation?
You know, Mitch, it's, it really, it's a function of rent and all that. So I wouldn't say there's any definitive number that I could give you. I know that we've, with TTCF, we're certainly way below market, market rents in the area to try to get them there. So there's no one number that I would, that I would throw out there.
So is there any allowances for TIs though specifically? So if I was to open up a restaurant and I came to your spot, which is completely empty, I'd have to put in all the infrastructure and all this. Is there any relief?
Again, it's a function of rent. We'd sit down, we'd talk about how much rent you'd pay and then we'd arrive at a number. So it's a balance between the two. One's an upfront capital investment, the other's paid out of time, but we look at it more as a return. And we do have some improvements in this space, that all the HVAC was installed originally. And so that's there, just, just needing distribution.
So depending on what the suggested retail operation would be, would, part of a negotiation before you would commit to an amount for TIs?
Exactly. It's a combination of upfront capital versus the rent.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, one more thing, John. You said Tal was the wrong place for an incubator. Why?
Well, I, as a business person, I love the fact that TTCF's been around for 25 years because I know they're going to pay the rent. So, I mean, that's just being very practical. My real reason though about the incubator, aside from the fact that, you know, restaurants and new retail, I think, you know, 50% more go out of business in three years. It's the highest failure rate. Is that because of that, you put them in a place like Tal where there is no established foot traffic, and you've all of a sudden raised the bar. It's going to go from 50 to a much higher number. Why would you want to put them there and have the challenge of trying to generate traffic in addition to selling whatever their, their particular service is? I mean, the place to put an incubator is where there is established traffic. It's not out in the middle of nowhere where we're the only building. And that, and that's fundamentally why I just don't think it's the right spot.
Thank you.
Did you have any other questions?
That was it. Thank you, Carl.
I do have another question. I think this is for TTCF, maybe for both of you. So right now, it's, it's empty. There might be, it might be a feasible thing in, for, for the two of you. Is there, do you have a vision for how long you would be there?
Well, TTCF may kill me, but I'd say indefinitely. I mean, one of the elegant things about their solution is there's no time limit. You know, I'm, I'm willing to make it available for five years plus whatever options they need. So my answer is indefinitely.
Because this is a significant philanthropic gift to finish this out, my board is interested in seeing us utilize it for benefit of our community for a while. And so part of what we're talking about is three, five-year terms, so 15 years max. So, yeah, that's, that's, that's the vision. But we know it's not permanent. And we know that there will be a time where the rail yard will be built out. It will be successful. We'll be frustrated because we can't find parking. And that's going to be a good thing. So we want that success, but we also want to see it get jump-started. So we're, we're in it for five years and hopefully we'll keep renewing it. But we also want to see what happens downtown so that, you know, we want success as well.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners?
I have one other question. Sorry. Would this, and I don't know if, who this is for exactly. I know you guys have made no indication that this would be open to public agencies as well as nonprofits. But would this definition preclude public agencies from also utilizing the space in the future?
I think so. A public agency would be its own, an office use.
Okay. So like the Town of Truckee could not hold an event there alone unless it was programmed and technically hosted by TTCF?
That's correct. Okay.
Okay. I'm going to move on to public comment. Now, if there, if you have a public comment, please step up to the microphone, state your name for the record. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. After you're done, please fill out a comment form and give it to Kaylee.
Good evening, Town of Truckee planning commissioners. My name is Alexis Soller, Executive Director of Mountain Area Preservation. I've had the gratitude and blessing to work on land use in our community for quite some time and participated in the rail yard master plan updates as well as the Truckee Artist Loft's proposal. So have a lot of familiarity with not only the rail yard master plan, but also the vision for that building and those activated uses. As a land use advocacy organization, we have worked for 38 years to really help promote smart growth, but also workforce housing. And I think for us in reviewing the application, being a true partner of TTCF, not only as a nonprofit, our biggest concerns are alignment with the rail yard master plan, knowing that a lot of energy went in to these allowed uses, what these allowed uses would be for the building, and also thinking about the longevity of the project. Those activated uses not only are important for the downtown extension. And during that rail yard master plan, we really focused on how are we going to get people from the historic downtown to the rail yard? And we understand that the artist loft is the only building. Huge advocates of that building. With that said, you need that activated ground floor to bring people. And so we have put comments on the record with some suggestions. We would like to see more activation in that space. We're concerned that it won't be the activated space that the artist loft needs to bring people down to that area as well as spark the investment for the artist loft. That said, we understand that everybody's sick of looking at a vacant area. And we also know that nothing happens quick when it comes to development and land use. Our organization has been a part of the rail yard for probably 30 years in working with Rick and Nancy and really seeing what this vision would be for Truckee, but also being an advocate for that workforce housing. So, you know, we have asked that you consider some additional conditions. We have asked that TTCF consider some more innovation with their application so that it is in alignment with the rail yard master plan because we really want to see that evolution of the rail yard continue. And part of it is that you are the first building in. So you are, you know, the new kid on the block and everything's going to come after. And it's been 20 years of planning, four years of being open. So nothing happens quick and good development takes time. But as commissioners, it's your job to really ensure that there's alignment with the rail yard master plan. And one of the items we put in our letter is concern of precedent, the precedent that this sets. And so it's, it's hard for the town to continue to make new uses in a rail yard master plan. And the question is, are we going to continue to make new uses or really honor the rail yard master plan and the uses we envisioned in it? Thank you.
Thanks, Alexis.
Brendan Riley, architect. I'm also a member of HPAK, the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission. I know some of you are new to this commission. That's exciting. And I'll echo Courtney Henderson in saying, welcome. I just will repeat some of what Alexis and the Downtown Merchants Association letters shared. There is a real concern in Truckee that our commercial district really needs to have an activated pedestrian vibrant ground floor area. And offices just aren't that. So the, the, the reason we're having this meeting, as Yumi described, is, you know, currently there's not a permitted use that really captures TTCF's intent. And that's for a good reason. Offices were not anticipated to be sort of the driving, driving force behind the pedestrian experience there. That said, they are permitted. So an office is permitted. Footnote, footnote four, the use is not allowed within 30 feet of depth of the ground floor building, blah, blah, blah. But it could be allowed for primary streets in the downtown extension for a period of up to five years from the issuance of a building permit. And that was to give some of that flexibility, was to allow for some of this initial investment to the comments that the Tal team raised. And I'm wondering a couple of things. The argument that TTCF's use of this space will create this active pedestrian experience, that it's going to have these meetings, 10, 15 people a day, maybe it's 120 people a few times a month. That all sounds good. What I'm worried about is that that doesn't really happen, that it ends up sort of becoming this sort of dead zone and a pedestrian experience that really needs life. And so I'm wondering if perhaps instead of carving out or creating this, the special use, this nonprofit office space and gathering, and sort of narrowly tailoring that to just this building, if maybe another way to make this happen is to look at that footnote four that would allow for an office use for a period of up to five years, permission to the building permits, final certificate of occupancy, instead allow for an office use for, say, up to 15 years for a building that's 100% nonprofit housing, kind of use all the conditions that staff's already, already identified. I'm concerned that this office use, activated or sufficiently activated or not, if it were to persist forever, as I think the Tal gentleman, gentleman referenced, or perhaps for up to 15 years, the current thinking of the TTCF board, if that were to endure forever and if our sort of answer to how do we continue to promote pedestrian experiences is going to be by creating sort of carved out, you know, new uses, I think that's the kind of spot planning that we aren't supposed to do. So I think better to stick to the plan and wait for something better to come. Or really put in conditions that are associated with this proposed use that either require it to be more activated. And if that's, you know, inconvenient, to look at the duration, that footnote four.
Thank you.
Good evening. Stephanie Olivieri, speaking for the Downtown Merchants Association. You have our letter, and we voiced our concerns about this spot zoning, which is very bothersome, I believe. Number one, many years ago, the Merchants Association asked the town to prohibit office spaces in the historic commercial area, because they were dead spaces. They did not add vibrance or interest to the community, to the downtown. And over the years, we've managed to eliminate office spaces on the street. The last one just went out at the Bar of America, replaced it, and I had lunch there today. It's vibrant and alive, and it adds to our street. Now, you just look up the street at the flying A building, and you have a dead space. It's a real estate office. You don't even know if anyone's in there. The lights are on, no one's there. The TTCF office, go out there. That's a dead space. You can drive by it, you can look in, but it seems empty. Nothing about it has an energy, or an interest, or an excitement. When the developers sold this project of the Artist Loft to this community, and to those who invested in it, I was on the Martyrs' Fund when they agreed to invest in it, a million four, and we encouraged that, and we worked hard for it. They were told this would be a vibrant addition to the community. And the Merchants Association knows that the Artist Loft was sold as, I mean, the rail yard plan was sold as an extension to the downtown. It's a seamless extension. We have a hotel on the plans right now, and we have the Cross Project already going. And now we're going to place office uses under a new name, just to make it fit, that is not going to give vitality, or interest, or excitement to this space. I think it's an injustice to the community to allow this use. The Merchants Association asked me to speak to that. The people, 300 people who live upstairs, I believe, would prefer something more active and interesting, shops, coffee shops, maybe brew pubs, whatever it is to give excitement and interest. And when you stop at the corner of downtown Truckee, and you look there, and you see umbrellas, and life, and excitement from what is located there in other businesses, that's what's going to draw you down there. There's no reason for us to stop now. Things are happening. There's excitement around the rail yard. The Cross Project's amazing. The hotel's coming, and they're talking now about the, what is it called, the theater. So, let's do something positive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners, and town staff, and TTCF folks. Sophia Heidrick, I'm the advocacy director for Mountain Area Preservation. We submitted a comment letter yesterday. I'm just going to highlight a couple of key points. This is an interesting proposal before you today. I think that the main challenge is that in order for you to recommend approval, you have to be able to make certain findings. And one of those findings is that the proposal is consistent with the goals and policies of the rail yard master plan. Goal one states, encourage vibrant and economically sustainable mixed-use redevelopment that offers diverse retail, entertainment, employment, and housing opportunities. And under that goal, policy one B states, encourage ground floor uses that attract pedestrian activity in the downtown extension district to create a vibrant street experience. On a day-to-day basis, it sounds like this will mostly be used as a meeting and office space, and that there will also be some nonprofit events sort of interwoven. Does that attract pedestrian activity? Does that create a vibrant downtown space? Maybe it does when those events are taking place, but I think it wouldn't in the same way as retail, or a restaurant, or something that has a more activated use from morning to night, something that's present from morning to night. And so, overall, the question is, does this proposal meet the intent of that goal and of that policy? I would have a really hard time making that finding. So, that's why we're hoping that you'll consider adding the two conditions of approval that we proposed in our letter. I heard TTCF say earlier that you purposefully sort of resisted the brainstorming. I get that. There's a lot of ideas, I'm sure, coming at you. Our goal is just to propose some ideas that could help bring this proposal and this project into alignment with the rail yard master plan, while honoring TTCF's goals and visions for the site as well. The first proposed condition is to require that the gathering space be made available a certain number of days per year for events hosted by other nonprofits or small businesses. The staff report states that TTCF may allow other nonprofits' use of the space. You know, what does that mean? How often? To ensure that the space would provide a larger community benefit, it would be helpful to define the number of days that that would be allowed, and also to make it available for small businesses. Our second proposed condition is to require that a small portion of the gathering space be constructed to accommodate other activated uses, such as a pop-up community space, or a small commercial vending opportunity. I know we've talked about this a little bit, but I think the idea is to have, you know, maybe a small bookstore, a small clothing shop, a small coffee shop, a small juice shop, something come in that is going to be activated morning, all throughout the day, something that really kind of brings life and vibrancy, and it's consistent. And I think that's what's missing from the current proposal, and that's what would actually bring this proposal into alignment with the goals and policies of the master plan. We believe that adding these conditions would better fulfill the goals and policies, making it a lot easier for you all to make those required findings. And I think more importantly, maybe even than the findings, is that it would fulfill the community's vision for this space. It would add value to the residents of the Truckee Artist Loft. It would add value to the community as a whole. And I just think it's something that is worthy of consideration. So, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to, yes, go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Alex Morrelatus. I'm a member of the Board of the Truckee Talk Community Foundation. I have been over in North Lake Tahoe and Tahoe for 20 years, and have sat on multiple boards and participated in 20 years of public process, along with running a successful, almost 50-year-old family business here in North Lake Tahoe. When staff brought this project forward to the board, the first thing I thought of, having watched Truckee's evolution and growth over the last few decades, that the alignment between the long game, if you will, of the TTCF and its role and impact in the North Lake Tahoe community, and the rail yard master plan is clear and obvious. And our direction was clear and obvious. Let's go make this happen, because it's the right thing. If you didn't understand from the presentation, the TTCF funds multiple nonprofits or contributes to the process that enables them to achieve their funding goals, including two of the organizations that just spoke to you, just to speak to the agnostic behavior of the TTCF. Think about the power that that will bring to the rail yard. When we convene, the long game, the short game right now is terrible in the facilities we're in, and to point a finger at it is validation of the need to move to a space like this, where we can achieve our potential. So, think about the long game. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. And it's time to move on to deliberation. So, I'd like to hear some ideas about whether we feel this is going to activate the public space. Is it consistent? Is it worth making a change to the rail yard master plan? Can we call it consistent? Is this going to be a gathering place? And is parking an issue? Thoughts? Amy?
I'm just curious how the amendments proposed by one of the public speakers would, how that would be accepted. Is that something we would have to then send back to them, and then they come back to us with amendments, or can they accept them now? How does that work?
Can we even make those kind of requirements?
Right. Can we even make those requirements? I'm not sure we can.
Tonight, you wouldn't, you likely would have to continue the hearing. First, you would have to ask the applicant if they'd be interested in doing such a change to their project. And then, we'd probably have to ask them to amend their project description, and then come back with an updated project description for the zoning clearance. And it would likely be adding another zoning clearance to add a retail-type use to the project. Alternatively, we can move forward, and if it does get approved by the town council ultimately, the use of a retail, the retail use is a permitted use in the land use table. So, if they feel that a incubator, a retail incubator space is desired within that space, they could come back to the town, apply for zoning clearance at the staff level, get that approved independently. Obviously, that's not necessarily, wouldn't be under your purview, and wouldn't be as part of this application, but that is an option for them down the line.
So, we have to take the amendment the way it's given to us now? We can't make any adjustments to it?
You can make some adjustments. There are some items that if we, since we noticed it, we have to make sure we notice the entire action that we're going to, we're asking you to take today. If you were just tweaking the actual definition, or the land use table as it's shown, or the zoning clearance conditions of approval as for the project that they described, we can likely, we can do that all tonight as a recommendation to council.
We could include an encouragement in the, in our notes, or we could tweak the definition you said. For example, if we wanted to say that a retail outlet was permitted within this tiny, narrow use.
Sure.
That answer your question fully? No, you don't have to have a comment.
I don't have to have a comment. I always have comments. I think any, my comment is, anything that we decide is not to reflect on, and I'm going to get the acronym wrong, is not to reflect on the foundation's value as a part of this community. That is, it is not a reflect, clearly, a lot of wonderful work is done. What we're trying to decide is whether this particular space is the correct use of the space, not a reflection on anyone's value to the community. And it's, you know, I'm learning as I go how many great, great things happen in this community, how many wonderful people work in this community. But I'm concerned about that activation of space, and the original rail yard master plan. We do want to draw people farther down the street. We want to build a resilient community that has a lot of walking, has a lot of biking, has a lot of interest and value to the community. And so, that, I just want to register that concern with this amendment, because as someone pointed out, once you start amending things, where do you stop? Right? So, if there was an original intention, which I was not part of, but I want to honor it as much as we can, so that we're looking to the future, and not just to quickly fill something. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I think quickly is, that's, we may call it quickly, but the property owners may wish it had been a little more quick already. So, and may perhaps some of the residents. Are there other comments on, I mean, the possibility of, possibility of tweaking language is one thing I think we should look at. So, regarding the activation, is this a place that we feel like is going to be lively, an attraction? Is it going to bridge the gap from downtown to Tal?
Anything in that spot is good. Now, I get the original intention of the codes. However, it's been three, four years now? Four years and nothing. So, what do we wait? Another four years? I couldn't even get an answer out of the gentleman, or what, how much help he would give to TIs if I opened a restaurant.
These two parties already have a relationship.
That's my point.
I mean, yeah, I just want to echo kind of what we've heard tonight. Going by that space regularly, there's nothing there. Like, it is dead. An office can't be any deader than it already is.
Right.
I have like, I have some concerns about the project, but I'm also really excited to see this type of use. Doing a lot of community engagement myself, this is a really unique space. I think there's a lot of potential here to be really valuable, and to bring something really different. I also think there's a lot of, you know, potential for organic synergy between nonprofits being located in affordable housing. We see that a lot. So, I'm really excited about that opportunity and potential. So, I think there are some things we maybe need to flush out a little bit more, but generally, I think this is a really exciting idea.
Can I also offer? Yeah, I agree. I think, going back to the master plan, and it really is about the intent of the master plan, you know, elements of the plan do exclude, or really the code, I guess, exclude office. And so, it's important to consider that. But at the same time, it does make allowances for certain types of office. So, first, it allows office for the first five years of a building's occupancy. I think in retrospect, and this was the first project in the rail yard, so we are learning as we go how this works. Five years is not enough to activate a region. It's been four years, and it's been completely empty. So, clearly, you know, just looking at the plan, like, five years was not enough time to activate transition. And then, second, we do already have this category of membership organization facilities, which includes business associations, civic and social fraternal organizations, country clubs, labor unions, political organizations, professional membership organizations, which are permitted at all times on all ground floor elements of DE, which, I get that this didn't fit into that, but I'm thinking about how much pedestrian traffic those drive, and it feels very similar to this nonprofit use. I actually would argue that this nonprofit use, through its many, its emphasis on meeting and gathering, is more pedestrian traffic. And lastly, yeah, I understand TTCF doesn't currently run an event every night, but that's because they don't quite have the space for it. And I think it's very exciting that they will. And, you know, having worked with nonprofits in town, there's a lack of spaces in this town. Like, there's only, like, the number of times we meet at Railies upstairs is shocking, right? We all know that. We've all done that, right? So, I do see a meeting space as actually helping activate a location, and not as a detriment to the location. You know, in terms of things I would see differently, I actually would look to loosen a little bit the definition of the use, because I'm worried that it's, yes, right now, it meets their expected use, but 10 years from now, will it be too restrictive? You know, just things like, do we need a max meeting size in the use definition? I understand, we already have places where we have max meeting sizes, like fire code.
Jason, if they outgrow their meeting spaces, then they'll move on, and retail will go back into it. So, that's actually a good thing. And that's probably why it's as restrictive as it is.
Yeah, it's restricted to 120 in the definition now.
Can we pull the definition up?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thanks.
Yeah, but they did say they had in a meeting, what, this last year, that had 85 people. So, I'm just worried that, are they going to suddenly kick out people? Because, you know, I'm being facetious maybe, but I just want to make sure we don't overly restrict.
Well, the town council did encourage us, instruct us, direct us, to keep, directed planning staff to keep the definition as narrow as possible. And that is spot, land use planning, yes.
I think that the definition being narrow is captured in the 100% affordable housing element. Like, that really is just this project. But what I'm hearing from the community is they want more foot traffic, more activation. So, anything that would restrict them from being more activated, I think we should, you know, consider removing.
Like what?
The only one that, I mean, what I've heard is if they wanted to add like pop-up type stuff, they could just go through administrative approval. So, that's good. If they want to invite other public nonprofits into the space, they can go ahead and do that, because that is already under the definition. The only concern I have is, what I heard is that we don't normally define, you know, put max meeting sizes in a use definition. And so, I wonder if that doesn't need to be there.
I guess how different is this 120%, or 120 people compared to the, you know, you know, fire code?
Occupancy level?
Yeah, exactly.
Parking.
For that 3,000 square foot space.
I think parking is our next issue.
Well, this is a part of it, though. 120 people, spots, blah, blah, blah.
So, maybe let's look at the concerns we have, and then come back and say, here's the ways we can edit this. So, we have, we have the activation. And I think what I'm hearing from both the public and us up here, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we all agree that the rail yard master plan was thought, it's a thoughtfully developed document that we want to pay attention to and implement, truly, truthfully. That having been said, this space is empty. I'm also hearing that we kind of feel like something in there would be better than nothing. So, there is a concern about, is parking adequate? Well, right now, there's plenty of parking, because it's first come, first served. And even with a big event, it probably would hold all of the parking. And parking being first come, first served, if you ask me, just means that if you want parking as part of the parking pool, move in now. That seems like a good incentive. That seems like a good incentive. So I don't know that I would change that, but how do the rest of you feel?
I'm fine with the parking. I just brought up if we, if you made it unlimited people at your meeting spaces, then would it start to become a problem eventually? In my opinion, you, you don't want to zone for the worst case scenario on every single thing. We'd, your sewer fees would be through the roof if that was the case. And downtown would be pretty much parking lot. Anybody who's gone to Truckee Thursdays on Thursday night knows. We're not, we're not zoning or, or planning for the extreme cases.
Yeah, we can't plan for the 500-year storm. We have to plan for something a little bit more reasonable.
Right.
Occasionally, it could get crowded downtown. That's good.
Unless you live there.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of parking, if that's what we're moving on to, I think, yeah, planning for the worst case scenario is not efficient. I also think we are trying, and part of the rail yard master plan is to encourage that pedestrian biking, all the other alternate modes. So creating more parking is not helpful for that. So that's just my opinion. I don't think we should require them to have additional parking. On the flip side, keeping that meeting capacity limit would hopefully help keep traffic to a minimum. If we open that gate, I think it would, you know, it would require, well, one, I don't know if the space could accommodate more people, but two, I think it would require a little bit more of a, of analysis from LS, LSC, LCS, LSC? LSC, the parking, the traffic folks. Yeah, just to see what the traffic impacts would be of more people on, on the site or how regularly those meetings were happening. So I, I am leaning towards keeping a limit on the capacity. Because again, I think it's probably a good thing. I mean, this is, they didn't express the desire to be there forever. This is a temporary fit, and I think it's a temporary transitional occupant for a space that has been struggling. So I'm seeing it through that lens. And I think, you know, I'm leaning towards keeping no additional parking requirements and keeping a max capacity for gatherings.
Is there some way that we might want to edit this to incorporate the potential for a pop-up, I guess is the word we were using? A bookstore, an event where some kind of fundraising art is sold or something? Is there a way we could just edit this? Does anyone have a suggestion for? And do we, do we need to put it in there? Staff, do we need to put that in there if they want to do it?
That was going to be my question. Do we even need to do that?
If we don't need to do it, no. But if we do need to do it, maybe we could add a sentence that could allow that kind of additional activation potential.
It's up to you if you want to add that in. It would, it sounds like it would be voluntary and not necessarily a requirement of the project. You could also consider, if they do this incubator space, it could be something that they manage as a nonprofit. And so maybe that just already falls under the definition that's existing.
But a retail?
Yeah, I mean, I think if they're doing a one-time event where there's hosting retail incubators, I would say that they come in and it would be similar, they'd be required to meet the same occupancy standards. It would be very similar.
Let's move away from the incubator question for just a moment. What if they set up a small bookstore in part of it that, and then put a sign out? Well, that's a different matter.
If they wanted to do a commercial use.
An umbrella out front that says, "Books here."
I think if there was a commercial use, that was a permanent fixture, we would want them to go through a zoning clearance.
Okay, so I guess a question for us is, would we want to try to build that in as a, as an activation, for activation potential so that they didn't have to go over another hurdle in the future?
Can I ask another clarifying, like another hypothetical?
Always, yeah.
Sorry. If they were, let's say they were partnered with a nonprofit and the nonprofit's having a big week of events, and they have a little table where you can buy stickers or something, that's considered nonprofit use and would be permitted as it is?
Yeah, if it's funding for a nonprofit, yeah.
Funding for nonprofit. Thank you.
Mitch, you looked like you wanted to say something.
I lost it. I'm sorry.
So I guess the, the question is, so they can go through a zoning clearance, the zoning clearance process to put in retail in the future. Like we're not precluding them from ever doing that. I guess the question would be, do we want to suggest to council that we recommend that they are required to include a commercial component? Is that the question?
There's, I, I would be interested in discussing that. We could, a recommendation is soft, it's not a requirement.
Right.
But if we were to encourage TTCF to include some kind of, I'll just call it a pop-up.
Any tenant is going to need a zoning clearance, is that correct?
If it's a commercial use, then, under this current definition, yes. You could consider adding a small accessory retail use, commercial use within this definition if you wanted to add more specificity to this, to this.
Well, if there was, as we mentioned earlier, if, if one of the partner nonprofits said, oh, for, this is your month to set up a shop where you sell posters and decals and t-shirts and ask for donations, maybe that's, that's nonprofit work. So that's already included. I, I'd personally like to see something, maybe not in this definition, but as we hand it to council, however, we could incorporate an encouragement to have things that would attract the general public, not just members having meetings. Meetings are so much fun and active, of course, we all love meetings. And you see people coming in and out of a building. That's, it's, oh, wow, what's going on? But it's not as exciting as, you know, buying a decal or a t-shirt. So, or the general walk-in public. I would like to see us somehow incorporate an encouragement for that. But I could use some help constructing that if you think it's something we could do.
I'm not in favor of that.
Why not?
Because I'm not in favor of, in essence, telling TTCF what their business model is.
I'm just encouraging public walk-in, but thank you, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I think from a league, like from the zoning, I agree with you. So anyway, let me summarize, right? Where we've heard these recommendations from public comment, and I think MAPS proposal was very clear-eyed and good. I agree with their intent. I, I don't want to require it, though. I'm okay to make it all, they may do these things, right? They may allow use by other nonprofits. They may add a retailer or whatever element if they so decide one day. And I think I'm hearing you agree with that position as well. But you want to know, can we find a way to also just, just, maybe, maybe it's a bullet in the resolution, like, but we encourage, you know, finding ways to activate, you know, maximize pedestrian draw for the space, something like that.
I don't, I, I'm not sure it belongs in the resolution. I don't, just don't know from a procedural standpoint what we do, or if we just tack on something that we're, we'd like the council to bring up and notice.
Yeah, you can always do that. I mean, in other actions the planning commission has taken, you've made recommendations where the wording is encouraged, so we can include that.
But I also don't want them to interpret that it means it must be required.
Yeah, I would be fine with that because then you're not telling them what to do, you're just giving them an option to. Keep in mind, though, the more narrow this is, the quicker they're going to actually leave. Right? The less they're allowed to do, and it stays straight and narrow, and they can't do these other things, it's going to encourage them to move on to the next spot once they grow out of it, instead of aligning so that they can do other things. Truly, truly, the master plan wants real retail. And just a little pop-up isn't really, I don't think it's going to create that much more pedestrian flow. So assuming that the buildings get built within the next 10, 15 years around Artis Lofts now, it will be time for them to go.
But might be time just from a financial perspective for the relationship.
At which time, it'll be easier for John to rent it out.
The tenant you want then, in the future. Seems to me there's a good match between an empty space and a, and a vibrant community organization right now. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding this?
I'm not sure yet. I, I think it's a great idea for now, but not forever, which is what I kept hearing Stacy say.
We're not, we're not, there's nothing in here that says it's forever.
Right.
Nothing. It's, it, it works, I think that the, what the staff has developed here works as a temporary measure. This use would remain a permitted use very specifically to the ground floor of a building with 100% affordable housing in the rail yard area. So that would be there. We will have done that if we were to approve this. But I don't see it applying to a lot of other places, as we clarified earlier. Do any of you want to make a specific change to this definition? But I, what I think I heard from you all is, we don't feel the need to require anything different with respect to parking.
Should we consider adding it to industrial heritage? The only reason, I, I don't feel strongly, but the only thing is, you know, when the town council did debate this back in October, their main concern was like, we don't want to do this. And then like, it took, you know, a lot of staff, you know, it took a substantial amount of staff time. We don't want to do this and then be like, oops, we missed a spot, we should do it again in somewhere else, or add this to other. Now, that would probably be easier than creating a new definition, but I'm just curious, maybe this is a question for staff. You know, if, if in the future we did want to add this to other zoning categories, is that a easier matter or more complicated?
It would probably be easier since it's already an allowed use within the downtown extension district, I guess.
Okay.
So what are you asking?
I was just wondering if it should, you know, on this chart, 5-1, it's only in one, it's in DE, shouldn't also be in IH, industrial heritage? Just.
Isn't this building in DE?
Yes, but what if one day another pure affordable project comes into?
Well, I think if we're trying to limit this from happening anywhere else, we should limit it and keep it as limited. And usually, Jason, I'm the other way. I'm a less regulation guy, as a regular rule. But in this case, the more regulation, the better.
I, I agree. We're, we're focusing on this, we're doing this for a specific reason if we're doing it. And for a specific purpose, for a specific property, it's, it, that is what it is. So I don't know that it makes sense to extend this to anywhere else now.
But I do understand, and I did hear, I think, the concern that we are, you know, we're looking at one specific instance for zoning, for changing of zoning, and that is something that generally isn't best practice. But I also feel like this is a unique case that hasn't, you know, lots of different solutions have been thrown out there and nothing has stuck. So I think we're all trying to figure out ways to activate the site, draw people in, draw people from downtown to this space, from this space to downtown, to create that bridge and that connection. And I honestly, based on everything we've been reading and seeing about this, I don't, I can't think of another way to do that. In our current economy, in our current, you know, in the situation that we're currently in, I'm not seeing any other solutions that would, you know, be more broadly applicable throughout the general, you know, the zoning code or the rail yard master plan. Like it just seems like a unique, specific instance.
This is why it was crafted the way it was?
Yes.
Sense, yeah, sense, senses coming. Is there someone that feels like we're ready to?
I'm going to make a motion to determine the project exempt from CEQA, under CEQA Guideline Section 15183 in Public Resources Code 21166. And motion to approve the Artis Lofts rail, rail yard master plan amendments and Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation zoning clearance based on their recommended findings and subject to the recommended conditions of approval, plus minor grammatical changes.
I'll second.
Why are you looking at me like that?
Well, I would like to talk about that because I'd like to add on a, a note that says the commission, or perhaps a commissioner, would like to encourage TTCF to include events and/or pop-ups, if you will, I don't know what the right word there is, to further activate the space.
Wouldn't, would a maybe compromise be, you know, events or activities that are open to the public? Not just invited guests or members? Or would that almost serve the same function? Not as necessarily a retail?
I think that would.
Establishment, but just to generate foot traffic, essentially, things that are open to the public?
I mean, a lot of their events already are open to the public. But I, I, I agree, going more general is better than specific.
If you don't feel it's necessary to include that encouragement?
I mean, an option we have too is that since you have a motion on the table with the second, we could do a roll call for that and see where we land as proposed. Or you could ask Mr. Clarence if he would like to withdraw his motion.
I would also note that the staff, the staff report will probably talk about some other discussion, and then the minutes will also be provided to the town council for their, them to consider.
I'm satisfied with that.
May I make an amendment to that motion? I know it's seconded. I forget my Roberts Rules of Order.
I think if I'm agreeable to it, because I made the motion, is that correct?
Correct.
So it is, Amy?
Uh, to put a time limit on this amendment, on this resolution.
Of?
Of, uh, maybe 10 years.
So would you, you would say that the, this use would sunset out of the rail yard master?
At least 15 years. That's what they're negotiating. It's, that's a minimal, and I'm not even a fan of that.
Maybe that would satisfy some of the community concern because we're saying, you know, at, once you have something in a space, if you do not have a time limit, and, you know, we don't know what happens in 15 years. There could be a lot of buildings around there, there could be none. It's hard to remove that permission because then anybody who comes along after that is going to say, hey, but you, you let them, and we're nice people too. And I apologize for my snark. But I think we do have to put a time limit on it so that the other concerns that we've heard are recognized. So if you're saying 15 years, I would accept that.
I'm not saying 15 years, I'm, I'm.
That, we did hear that number.
Yeah. I don't think I'm open to amending it under, for that.
I think, you know, I made a push for making the definition broader, and it was, I heard three or four votes to say no to that because the idea was that as the space natural, as the region naturally, organically changes, this use will go away because there will be higher and better uses. Right? Retail and restaurant will pay much higher rents. And I think what I'm hearing is that rather than dictate to the market that that's going to take 15 years, I think we'd rather just let that organically happen. Maybe it takes five years, maybe it takes 25 years. We don't actually know yet.
Right. Thank you, Jason.
Is that what you're saying, Mitch?
That's exactly right.
Could there be a way to build in a review after 15 years and see, you know, does it come back to the planning commission to see if it's been successful or not? Or, you know, most of the clearances are through the zoning administrator, but could it come back in this specific instance or this specific use through the planning commission for, or to council, I guess, for whoever the decision-making authority is?
Can we add a review in 15 years?
15 the right number, then? If it's a periodic review or a single review?
Yes, you could make that recommendation. It's highly unusual, I will say, and I think there would want to be some criteria established as part of that because your staff may not be the staff that you have here now in 15 years that would be the ones responsible for bringing this back. And so I have some concern about what their role would be and what that future planning commission's role would be in reviewing that.
To just determine, I think that the intention was to just determine whether or not this amendment to the master plan is still worth keeping in, whether it needs to be re-amended, and that if it were, it could, you could just add a sentence here that says, the inclusion, now it'd have to be in the resolution, the inclusion of this amendment is subject to review by the planning commission in 15 years. It's rather unusual, I know.
But like, we wouldn't evict a tenant, right? Like the, the, the cure would be that the, what, the property becomes legal, non-conforming or something, right?
Good point, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, your, your land use approvals are, they stay with the, with the land. So functionally, if you're okay with approving a use, it's going to be there. Yeah.
We toyed around with the idea of a limit. I think we talked with the applicant about that. I think they even proposed some sort of limit at one time. And, but I think that the monitoring and then the enforcement ultimately would be very challenging.
Brendan mentioned footnote four in that table, and that it has a five-year line on it. Could you bring that up, please? Could you bring that up, please?
How is this, yeah, is the question, how is this going to be enforced?
Are they going to kick people out after five years?
Yeah.
Except that that's not up for discussion right now because we're not doing P4. They created their own.
Yeah, I mean, I'm still cognizant that we have a motion on the floor, so if we want to keep this going, we can. This is a little unusual. Just a little bit of background because we, a lot of our commissioners weren't part of the rail yard master plan development, but the five-year concept was actually proposed by Holiday, in part because he has had similar experience with projects like this in other areas where that five-year timeframe was successful in what he needed. So I think some of the other parts of this, about the 30 feet and all of that, was a discussion that happened collectively among the town and Holiday Development to come up with something that recognized the need to have transitional uses, but also this desire to have that more pedestrian-oriented feel within the area. It was also at a time when Holiday Development was anticipating being the master developer for everything. So the circumstances are a little bit different now, so it's hard to go back and say, you know, those five years is something that wasn't enough, or maybe it was, you know, should have been 15 years at the time. I mean, it's the same situation with the foundation that they're trying to do their best to guess what that timeframe is that could work for them, but 15 years is a really long time, so they just ultimately are doing their best with what information they have right now. So similar to what we did when we created the master plan.
I just wanted to reiterate, though, that we're not going under this, right? This is office business and professional P4. We're not doing that.
I'm just saying that there's, you could add a footnote, looks like that for this use. I'm not, I don't think we should. I think that the organic development of this area will happen. I believe in it. I don't think we need to alter the, right now, I don't think we need to alter your motion.
Thank you. Sorry, Amy.
I think we have a second on the table. Is there a roll call?
Chair Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Claren?
Yes.
Commissioner Toop?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaufman?
No.
Enjoy the new space. Thank you so much to the members of the public who've attended this meeting. We like to see interest in the planning process and in the future of our community. Okay, we got two things done. I didn't think that was going to be that big. All right, we now are moving on to section nine. I think this is where we get to sit back and enjoy the ride. I'm not sure. We're going to, we're going to have some training.
Yeah, we're loosely calling this training, I think, on the agenda. We had that shown as planning commission norms, and this is really because we have a new commission. And so ideally, we would have done this before you had your meeting tonight, but we always wanted the public to have a chance to get through the agenda items and do that first. So you've already got a taste of this. Jenna and I are going to tag team along with our engineering department, so we've got Scott here too. And really, the evolution of this, like I said, is because we have a new planning commission. So we don't have a lot of opportunity to provide training, open discussion, get-to-know-you session, any of that, because we oftentimes have full agendas. So taking advantage of the fact that we didn't have an overly loaded agenda tonight, we wanted to go over just a few things with you. And this doesn't mean this is the only time that we'll do this, that there could be other things the commission is interested in hearing more information about. In the past, we've done like an overview of the council's work program. We've done sort of a what's in the hopper, so what is the planning department working on as far as land use applications or general plan implementation? So we will have some opportunity with some of those things in the future too, as the agendas become more solidified and we understand where we've got gaps in our scheduling to be able to do that. This is really in part because we did have some capacity and we wanted to kind of show for you. So just going back to this one, this is sort of our broad topics. Kelly gave you, our new commissioners, the introduction to the Code of Ethics and Conduct. You have a copy of that on the dais with you, and she's asked that you sign that tonight before you leave, so I'll just make sure I collect that. A little bit of kind of working together as a commission, working with us as staff, public comment, sort of conflict of interest, our engineering topics, and then at the end we'll have some time for discussion. So before I get into the kind of more formal slides, just an opportunity for everyone to hear each other and say, what made, what inspired you to be on the planning commission? So why did you want to be on the planning commission? We'll start with Mitch and sort of go around.
I don't know. I've been looking at council and commission for 30 years since it's been established, been asked a gazillion times to do it. I've been busy most of my life in my careers and have become semi-retired and decided it was a good time to jump in. I think I'm pretty knowledgeable and, and that's why, that's why I'm here.
I first got involved with the river revitalization committees, and through that got to talk to a lot of local business owners and, and really get kind of into the deep end of, of making the general plan happen, which I think is, is one of the goals of this commission and of our council and really of everyone in town. So when the opportunity to join planning commission came up, it just seemed like a really exciting way to expand from beyond just the river corridor and starting to think about the same issues for the entire town. Thanks.
Jan asked me to serve. So after having spent most of my, the greatest part of my career as an environmental planner, but having been trained in city planning, I thought this was a wonderful opportunity to learn more about that part of the planning field and hopefully to help with the future of the community. Sounded fun.
Yeah, I have a planning background and I'm a planner by trade, more on the climate side these days, but I do love my days at the counter, maybe not. But it was just a way to connect with the community and I think learn, one, more about it, and then, two, help kind of shape it in a way that I think will serve all of us. So I think that's one of the reasons I really wanted to be on it. Also, it's just, yeah, it's a great way to, I think, learn and connect and just be, you know, an active member of, of the town.
I too have a background in urban planning, more, more specifically, transportation planning, but I want to be part of the, part of what's happening in the town. I've always been in, not always, but for many, many years in public service back in New York City. So I believe in public service and I believe in giving back to where I live. And when the opportunity arose to do so, speaking with a couple of the council members, I was delighted to be offered this opportunity and I'm honored to serve, and I hope I can provide some good counsel and help the town achieve its mission.
Awesome, thanks. Do I have any fellow staff members that want to talk about why they chose to work for the town of Treki, so that our commissioners can get to know us a little bit too? This is totally putting you on the spot, so you don't have to commit.
Sure, I'll start. So my name's Scott Mathott, and I'm one of the senior engineers. I am born and raised in Treki, and so I went to school at UNR, and when I graduated from UNR, I always had this vision of working for my hometown. And so worked for a couple of years in the private side down in Reno until I was, until an opportunity became available as an assistant engineer, and I've kind of been here for the past 10 years, working my way up and enjoying the ride along the way.
I moved here not knowing what I wanted to do right after college, and I lived here, worked for an architecture firm for a few years, thought I wanted to be an architect, but realized I liked the spaces in between, the social interactions of planning. And so I went back to school for it, and then I thought it'd be great to come back to Treki where I felt it was my new home, and I thought it'd be great to plan for it. And while it can be challenging to plan and work and plan and live in the same community, it is also very rewarding to make that impact. So that's why I continue to work here as a planner.
I'll go. I'm Becky Buchar, Assistant Public Works Director. I actually used to work as a traffic engineer in Tahoe City and worked as a consultant for the town and worked with Danielle. We actually worked on the first, the last general plan, the 2025 general plan, and during that experience, I, I kind of saw the differences, the town staff being able to make a difference and really do things for their community and felt a little bit different than just churning out traffic studies. So I also really enjoyed working with the town and thought that they had a great vision. And so I, when a job opening came, I applied and the rest is history.
I'm Kaylee. I'm the admin tech for planning, and I was really drawn to work for the town. I started three years ago now, and I've lived here for about 13, and I really just wanted to work for the, or for our community and kind of it for me.
I'm Jenna. I'm the town planner. Mine's not as aspirational as everyone else's. I was working in Santa Barbara County and yet was traveling to mountain communities all the time for vacation, so had the brilliant idea, one, couldn't afford to live in Santa Barbara, two, why not just live in a mountain community rather than constantly traveling to it? And so kind of stumbled upon the town of Treki job. Generally knew where Treki was. I grew up in Northern California, came here as a kid, but didn't really have all my sites planned on Treki. And then honestly, I read our vision statement, this is where I dork out about being a planner in Treki, and this is true, I'm not making this up, I've told this many times before, read our vision statement out of the 2025 general plan, because of course I did when I was applying for the job, and was like, wow, it like gave me goosebumps. So at that point, I kind of became laser focused on moving here in a part, again, because I couldn't afford where I was living, and at the time, Treki was more affordable. I quickly learned to stop saying that once I moved here, because to many folks at that time it wasn't, and yet for me, my narrative was, wow, this is a more affordable place than I was living. So kind of all the pieces fell together, and then I eventually got offered the job and sort of made the leap, and that's how I landed here. And I was a planner previously in my old life, so the job was the same, but the community was very different.
Thanks, you guys, for doing that on the spot. I'll give you a little bit about me last. I've been in Treki for almost 23 years, and that whole time I've worked for the town of Treki, which is pretty unusual. And I sought out Treki. When I finished my grad school program for planning, I wanted to be in a small, authentic mountain town, and it was very limited scope because I was from the Bay Area, and this was sort of my exposure, and I didn't consider South Lake Tahoe like an authentic town. And Treki always had sort of.
We're on the record, Danielle.
Right on.
At the time, put on my, my hat, payback. They're doing great now, but at the time, it wasn't. And from that perspective, Treki was always sort of a draw for me. So I had multiple job offers, and this was the one that spoke true to me, in part because there is a true sense of community here. And so I've had the luxury and benefit of being able to work with so many people in the community over the years to kind of help redefine, define who we are as a community, what that means, and I love the evolution of it, honestly. It's never really the same thing, as much as people think when you live in a small town that things don't change, things do change. And every time you get a new perspective, a new person, it really just adds to the flavor of that. So I'm a glutton for punishment and I, I just enjoy it. So that's why I'm still here. Anyway, enough about us. Okay, so on to some of the more dry stuff that we're going to cover tonight. The Code of Ethics and Conduct, we're just going to gloss over this a little bit because you do have copies of it, but this is something new that the council added, and it's applicable for all of their appointed committees and commissions. So when you heard Brendan tonight, you know, he's on the historic commission, this is something that they were handed also, and we have the arts commission, we have planning commission, we have a lot of different groups that the council is kind of responsible for, and they wanted some consistency in that. So that's really the evolution of it. It's not that they necessarily thought that people weren't doing a good job or that it wasn't necessary. It's really just they're trying to elevate expectations and make it really explicit for the community what those expectations are. I think you did a good job of honestly demonstrating this tonight. You had great discussion, even if you maybe didn't quite agree, you were helping each other kind of understand the different perspectives. You were looking out for the public comment that you had, you kind of took that in your consideration. All of that is really kind of the purpose of that. I think ultimately, in just like the world politics that we're kind of dealing with right now, you know, that working relationship is really important, and so, you know, making sure that when you're thinking about what your decision ultimately is, is kind of, you know, taking into consideration the different perspectives without sort of that personal influence, you know, what's sort of the town looking out for, what are the council's priorities, what are those expectations? It's all very basic. We're all required to do ethics training every couple of years, and we joke about it, but some of the stuff that gets brought up as examples for that are appalling. I mean, just things, I, I'm surprised every year when we, every other year when we have it, the new examples of things that are, you know, city officials or city staff, and just the lack of check and balance sometimes that happens within that. So it's always good to just kind of cover that big picture. So you guys can read that at your leisure. The other thing, which again, I think you guys already kind of addressed tonight and did very well, is kind of listening to each other actively, recognizing when maybe you're not totally on the same page and working towards solutions or offering suggestions, that's great. If you guys get stuck at some point, you will hear us step in and offer some ideas to, you don't ever have to take our ideas to be, you know, the absolute. We're really here as a resource for you. So our working relationship is just that, we're here to provide information for you, to help you guys do the hard jobs that you have in making decisions. And so we're kind of the, the brainstorming team on the sideline here, trying to help you guys, just recognizing that you do have difficult jobs, being in the hot seat, you know, having to make decisions about things that affect our community.
Like, I can't go shopping in Cabo Nis anymore?
Yeah, that's a good question, Mitch. I'm sure you will.
You won't get the house discount.
Whoever said that was right.
But, I mean, we all recognize that we're, you know, we're in the grocery stores, we're walking on the legacy trail, like, we are out in the community and we wear different hats with that. Sometimes people will recognize you as a planning commissioner, sometimes they'll, you know, recognize you as the person that made that decision they didn't like. So, you know, they may not see you as like, you know, I'm out with my kids, or I'm out, you know, with my spouse, or whatever it is that, you know, they may not see that all the time. And I think just kind of recognizing that you're not always able to take off that sort of public presence, people will see you as that point of, of reference and resource in the community. And the staff face that too, that we're, we're always, we're always available. People are going to see us as working for the town of Treki and what, what information we provide is part of that. So that goes with the territory. The last kind of component on the screen here that I just want to bring up is, because it's a newer ad, is sort of the attendance requirement that council added, and that's in part because we did have some attendance issues, frankly, with the planning commission. And I am optimistic that we won't have to talk about this ever again, but if you miss three in a row or you miss a quarter of the meetings in 12 months, and it's a rolling, rolling 12 months, then there's going to be a discussion that's had between the town manager, your fellow council member, and me to talk about that attendance. So I think if you're, you know, on vacation, you have, you know, you're sick, those are things that are definitely excusable. It's the, Kaylee's trying to get ahold of you, and you've said you're coming to the meeting and there's no communication, that's where things just become very challenging for us to be able to have a quorum to manage the meeting. So again, I don't have concern, just bringing it up because it's a requirement, and I'm hopeful we'll never have to talk about it again. Again, we know stuff comes up, I mean, whether it's getting stuck in a snowstorm or someone in the household sick or whatever it is, like, that, that stuff all is fine. It's just the communication side of it, that we have Kaylee here, she's stellar with communication, and she will make sure that you let her know what's, what's happening in your life so that we can make sure we're scheduling things appropriately.
Yeah, we shouldn't be sitting up here saying.
Yeah, we shouldn't be sitting up here saying, we're so and so. We should have known that. And by the way, Kaylee, the packets are awesome with everything numbered and the pages numbered. Love it. Makes it so easy to find stuff. Thank you.
This is a little weird. Document. On your dais, this is for you to keep. This is a several years old resolution that really memorializes the procedures for the planning commission to operate from. This was adopted and then it was amended in 2020. And what you'll see as you glance through this is regulations related to how you run your meetings, how you select your officers, which you already done tonight, good job. The order of business in terms of how we organize the agenda each night, that is going to be very formulaic so that when you get your cheat sheet as the chair, you'll understand exactly what part of the agenda we're on. We have, as you saw tonight, approval of minutes, though we actually weren't able to do that, but normally we will, how our staff reports look. And then, I'm sorry, this is a long document. We also have things that relate to rules, decorum and order. So these are some of the more delicate items that you may run into as a commissioner, whether it's resigning from office, how we run the meetings, what we expect out of our public when they're submitting comments, decorum that's expected of us as well, we're included in this. And then sort of how it gets enforced. And this is stuff that we don't typically run into, but I will touch on that a little bit when we get into discussion on public comments. And then lastly, sorry, sort of how you run your motions. And I would encourage all of you at your leisure to run through this document. There are some very specific direction points that we all need to be aware of. I will say on occasion, we do sometimes forget, a question will come up, we may have to pull this up. We have it in our computer, it's accessible from our computer and we will look at this if we need to, if, if there's uncertainty about how you run a motion. Like tonight, we had to reinforce, oh, there's a motion actually up for consideration. So we tried to get you back to that original motion, recognizing if it doesn't pass, then you can consider a second motion and the amendments that you talked through tonight. So this is just important to understand that this exists. There's actually many thoughts about how you run your meeting. It's already been memorialized by commission, excuse me, by council. Second point I want to talk through, and you actually have already done this tonight in both points. You, you know, the notion of reaching consensus. So, you know, a vote is made by, tonight it would be a three to two or four to one as we saw or five oh. But we definitely need three votes out of the five of you if all are present on a vote to have a motion carry. And what I mean by reaching consensus is that you, what you did tonight is exactly what I'm talking about. You kind of wield and deal with each other to get to a point where four of you were comfortable making a recommendation to approve for the council's consideration. You talked through different options, you talked through condition modifications and so forth. That's all that I'm talking about in terms of reaching consensus. Now, what you also heard tonight was Commissioner Kaufman say, you know what, I don't agree, I'm going to vote no. And that is perfectly acceptable. You always have the option, you know, you don't need to be persuaded. As a commissioner, you are each your own independent vote. And if you cannot make the series of findings, which are always outlined at the end of your staff report, that is absolutely your purview to do so. And you don't necessarily need to reach consensus. When I am talking about reaching consensus, which is, it's clear that there's a majority vote on the dais and you may each have a certain issue or concern that you would like incorporated and you talk amongst each other to get to that yes vote or a no vote, certainly, the majority vote, I'll just say. And, and then you talk amongst each other to kind of negotiate. So again, there's opportunities to build consensus and then there's also opportunities to say yes or no and potentially be in the minority and that's perfectly okay. And then the last option
Question?
Sure.
So then if I, if I understand it correctly, then our vote in our minutes, that goes before council and so they can see that we weren't all
Yes.
perfectly in agreement. And that's information for them and it's useful information to them. And then we can, we can add notes to that, to which, which I was trying to do, which we didn't do, but if there had been, for example, a reason that you wanted to specify, Amy, why I don't, I don't agree, then we could always send that so that it's more rich with information. But I think that they'll see the notes on the deliberations. So
Yeah.
They get that information and whether we agree or not, if we can, those of us that would have voted yes, we can live with it. That may be partially the definition of consensus too. We can all live with it. We may not, it might may not be perfect for us, but live with it. But if someone doesn't vote for it, that's good information for the council, I think. So
Correct. And depending on the amount of discussion or deliberation that the dais has, our staff report will reflect that. If there is a three, two vote and very strong opinions and it's very divided and, you know, a lot of deliberation was going on and uncertainty and concerns, you know, our staff report will reflect that, not just the minutes. Minutes are an attachment to a staff report, sometimes buried in many, many pages of documentation. So if, if there were, you know, true angst, I'll just use that word, on the dais will reflect that in the staff report. If you are a four, one or a five zero, we may note the, the opposing vote and why that occurred and then generally say otherwise, you know, these were the topics that were discussed and leave it be. And then the last point, I will just touch on very briefly, and, and again, you already did this, so pat on the back. You, you do have options during your deliberation. You know, we will package a recommendation for your consideration. As Danielle said, it doesn't mean you need to do that. You can certainly look at options that are before you. This includes approving with modified conditions, which you saw tonight, you could deny if, even in opposite direction of what we may be recommending or certainly if we're recommending denial, you obviously always have the option to approve. In a case like that, when you have a majority vote to approve a project that staff was recommending denial, the one procedural change would be, we would say, okay, great. We recommend that you continue the discussion. We will come back with a very different resolution and package for you where the approval recommendation is, is developed in a different resolution. Because the, the resolution and all the findings that we would have prepared, you know, say that happened tonight, those would be, need to be vastly changed in order to support approval of a project. So, and in that case, we would, we would like you, we will ask you to articulate what findings you believe can be made and the reasons therefore. And we will then create a different resolution and we will come back at a subsequent hearing with a different public notice to support approval of a project. So that's just a procedural thing. As I mentioned, you can always continue a meeting. So in a case where you say, wow, we just have a lot of questions, either of the project applicant or staff, you would identify those questions, you would continue. You can either continue to a date and time certain, meaning we're ready, you know, next month, we know we're going to have answers. We tell you that's plenty of time to get you those answers. And then what that does is it means we don't need to renotice the project in the Sierra Sun and on the town's website and whatnot. If you aren't confident that we can get you those answers in a certain amount of time, then we would say to a date unknown and then we are required to renotice at that point. So those are some additional options and I think, oh, and again, just asking for more information, that's always your purview. Again, if, if there's things that you need to know in order to make a decision one way or the other, that's, you know, our job to get you that information. That's really our sole purpose is to help you make your decisions and/or if it's information from the applicant, then we'll work with the applicant to get that in a subsequent staff report. You.
So we touched on some of this already, but I think it's helpful to, when you look at the staff and their review, a lot of the work that they're doing is really just going through the adopted policy documents that we have, maybe the past history of a project. They're looking at the public comment that's been received and they're, you know, filtering all of that into a recommendation. And again, you know, asking questions ahead of time, if you have the ability to do that and we'll have a little section at the end for the commission to discuss like how we want to kind of deal with that as a commission. It's helpful for the staff to have time to prepare for something that might be more along the lines of additional research or just a more complex like legal question or something like that. Because as you can see, we don't often have the town attorney come to planning commission unless it's something we think, you know, is going to be, end up in an appeal or something like that. But generally we want the ability to do some research ahead of time if we can. That doesn't mean that you shouldn't ask us questions, obviously, when you get up here because you do have the benefit of getting a presentation by an applicant, you get public comments. So there's things that just by nature of you talking amongst the five of you that are going to trigger questions. So those are good. We do have the ability, as you saw, to be able to pull stuff up, whether it's everything from, you know, maps to the conditions of approval, whatever it is. So we're able to do that in real time. We also do like to kind of track when you've got like quite a bit of changes, you're thinking about adding to resolutions, we'll pull up just a Word document and we'll start kind of writing those all down and then we can ask during the motion, is this what you're, you're saying? So we have clarity with that. I think you guys did a great job tonight and kind of going over some of this stuff. So, you know, talking about conditions with the first project, like are the ones that we would want to modify or do we agree with the way that the written staff sometimes recognizes we've forgotten some or maybe we kind of had wording that wasn't quite exactly what we thought. So we'll make recommendations for that. But ultimately, again, we're just here to help you and help the community kind of understand, you know, what lane use is, what's coming, you know, in front of the community, how best to be able to talk about that and take those actions on behalf of the community.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
So reading this packet for the first time with this amount of depth, I know there were some 50, 60 conditions of approval. And then when I read the second one, I realized, oh, most of these are boilerplate, but some of them aren't. How, is there a, is that what, how would I know which ones are kind of the not boilerplate ones or maybe more and more unique to that project?
Or did you make it easier to tell the difference?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great suggestion. We could do that. Sometimes the ones that are more boilerplate will be a development code reference at the bottom. And then some of the ones where, you know, it'll say kind of the
Planning Division
Recommendation or another agency's, you know, recommendation. But we do have a list of ones where we could be a little bit more explicit and maybe identify those in where we say the recommendation next to them so that over time you'll start to see which ones are more standardized. And usually the first five or so are, are those standard ones where, you know, you must be compliant with the VELM code and you must meet the requirements of the other agencies.
Fees, yeah.
Yeah. There's an identification one, there's
So, so yeah, there is a section underneath each one that says like planning division or planning division recommendation. And I guess I was kind of interpreting planning division recommendation to be not boilerplate, but maybe that's not what that was intended to be.
I mean, it is for some of the planners, but I would say we don't have wholesale consistency. So I think we could take a look at that and create some consistency so that it would be easier, especially given that some of these projects will have, you know, 60 so conditions for them. And that way it'll be easy to go like, hey, I don't need to read the standardized ones. I'm just going to focus on the ones that are kind of specific to this project. So that's a great suggestion.
There's 15 to 20 of them that we've seen now.
Yeah. Great idea. I think we talked about the rest of this, just letting us know sort of what your scheduling is so that we don't freak out when we don't have, know where you are and you're supposed to be here. Again, stuff happens. So I'm, you know, we're, we're working towards the future here and I feel really good about our process. So I think it won't be an issue moving forward.
So this one's mine. And again, just like before, you've already done some of this tonight. So just want to briefly talk about kind of the different types of public comment that you'll receive. First is before a meeting, as public comments start coming in, we are sending those to you typically through the portal or through Kaylee directly. And those are, you know, no limit to amount of pages that can be, you know, accepted through public comment. Those are coming in as they are received. So you will sometimes see a flurry of public comments right before a hearing and sometimes you'll get some that are coming in, you know, two weeks before when we're sending out our public notices and someone fires off something right away. So just know that we're kind of getting them to you as they're coming in. That being said, we certainly encourage you as, to the best of your ability to, you know, check your town email as, again, to the best of your ability before a hearing because you will again, sometimes get a flurry of those right before the five o'clock deadline.
Let me just add on that.
Sure.
And actually, this was a suggestion of Commissioner Claren a while ago, that if we have, say, like a mitigated negative declaration, environmental document, we have a, you know, 30 day review period for that. So the public comments are sort of coming in over that 30 days. We're often giving those to you, even though the, the project isn't like ready to come to you for full discussion because we don't want you to have to wait. So that way you can kind of get a sense of what people are commenting on. If we're getting comments, you're able to read that more lengthy environmental document and then we'll give it to you again when the project comes back. So those are things where if we do have the ability to give you more, some information earlier, we want to be able to do that so that you're not just sort of stacked up with this, you know, 100 page environmental document to read, plus your staff report, plus all the public comments. So we're trying to gauge, you know, with those projects, giving you enough time for that too.
Did I notice correctly that the routing comments or routing, depending which part of the country you're from, were not in the agenda packet?
Yeah, we generally don't give you those because they just become the conditions of approval.
I was just going to say thank you because they, they have seen them at some point or maybe I just downloaded them because they were a link on the meeting site or on one of the portal sites. And yeah, those just tend to just turn into the conditions and then I, you don't need to read those twice.
Yeah, I mean, if it was a agency comment letter provided for an environmental document, then we probably would give you copies of those depending on what their comment is. I mean, if it's a, we have no comment, then obviously we wouldn't give you that. But there are occasions when someone like Truckee Fire has a much more substantive comment. And so we would want to make sure you have the ability to read it in their words versus just the summary or conditions. So it just kind of depends, but for the most part, no, we don't want to give you those.
I just want to say, Yumi, your slide on public comment was great. I loved that. And it was, as someone who submitted a public comment on the online portal, it can feel like, is this going anywhere or do they actually read this? So seeing it in the presentation was, I thought, a really, really wonderful way to recognize. And I know that's done normally.
I think we were missing the really exciting, like David Diamond comment that was like, go team. That one wasn't reflected on the slide.
And we will typically do that in our presentations. We'll include a slide that kind of summarizes the comments that receive. We recognize that sometimes you may not get everything in time before a meeting if you're busy that day or whatnot. So we, we try to include that so it's summarized. And then during the meeting, you, you heard public comments tonight. I'll note that our procedures do talk, and I mentioned this earlier, our procedures do talk to sort of how we manage public comment and we, I mean, the chair. There are some, I'll say procedures for recognizing the three minute time limit. You, you are empowered to cut someone off at the three minutes and say, thank you very much, your time is up. You know, that is perfectly acceptable to do. I realize it can be maybe uncomfortable or a little bit jarring, but you'll see that regularly happen at council, especially if they've got, you know, 15 items on an agenda and they've got 35 people wanting to speak on something, they'll, they'll typically be pretty firm.
Noted, I need to be more firm. But yeah, they, they were right up against it and we've seen people that just keep
And, and I will say though, it's also the chair's discretion. If someone is running over, you can certainly allow them to go beyond that limit. That, that's your, your
Oh, not going to happen.
Prolegated, thank you. That was the better word. And then I will also say, if someone gets kind of spicy, you have some directions here on, on ways to handle that. What is, and by spicy, I'm talking about being unruly. Yeah, if Scott's here. Just kidding. You know, you have the option of, of actually adjourning the meeting, leaving the dais and then we will work, you know, to remove that person from the meeting if we can. If not, we'll adjust, but you do have the option of sort of exiting the dais, going in the back, adjourning the meeting until that spiciness is resolved. So we don't see that very often, but it's just wanted to make you aware of that. And then
I'm sorry, would, would that be an adjournment? If you adjourn, you're done.
You would, you would acknowledge it as a temporary adjournment to allow the situation to be resolved.
Yeah, it really just depends on the scope of what it is. So we've had chairs in the past who've just done like a five minute recess and, you know, take that as an opportunity, as a restroom break or whatever it is, and then they'll come back at a specific time. I'm not even sure I remember a time when we've had to do a full I'm not even sure I remember a time when we've had to do a full adjournment. We really just do not get that level of sort of angst at the dais. A lot of times, too, if we recognize that there's some concern, then I will volunteer to work with that person sort of out in the hallway, too. So that's been a good solution. A lot of times is sometimes people just want an ear and don't recognize they're maybe being disruptive or something like that. So usually we're able to kind of get to more of what their issue is at a one-on-one level, once they've had their sort of time in front of the commission. So we've got some other tools that we can use that are pretty, pretty helpful.
We did have a concert.
But just if, if we do have a recess, like, we're not allowed to talk about, we're not allowed to deliberate during recess.
Just as if you were taking a restroom break.
Like, hey, how's your dog? Like, nothing. We cannot deliberate.
Dogs, beanies, yeah.
Who did the connections puzzle today? Something like that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like a pause to the meeting. So, yeah, you're just talking about anything but the agenda.
We did have a meeting, a few meetings ago, and I can't remember the topic when the people were shouting and, and you had to tell them to quiet down a few times. And then I think we did end up taking a break. But I don't know if we took a break or not, but we had some people and they were, you know, engaging, yelling at the person speaking and, yeah.
And it's your purview to try to put the kibosh on that.
Right.
As a chair. You can, you can say. So the last thing I'll touch on is.
Anna Husker.
Last thing I'll touch on is, you know, really the sole purpose of public comment and how does that factor into your eventual decision making? So I hope it goes without saying, we don't want you to be making up your decisions prior to the meeting, you know, without factoring in either written, obviously written, and any verbal comment that's received during the hearing. And the sole purpose of it is to listen to our constituents, weigh what they're saying, you know, focus on the development standards, kind of take it all in and then make your decision. So I know we've all, I know you, we heard this previously when you met one-on-one, but just wanted to underscore that that really is the sole purpose of what, what people are doing. It takes a lot to submit public comment. Oftentimes people get nervous. You'll see sometimes people get emotional. You know, they have to figure out the portal and trust that it's actually coming to us. They have to figure out how to even submit public comments. Sometimes they'll show up, taking time away from their families, et cetera. So it's really important to listen and really, you know, factor it into how you're going to make an eventual decision. And then I think I have the next one. I do. And I totally understand you cannot see what this is. This is a map of the town of Truckee. This is our 2024 conflict of interest map. So I know Andy and Danielle, Andy Morris, our town attorney, talked at length in your individual meetings. As commissioners, you have a number of different potential conflicts of interest that arise. This one reflects ownership of property within town limits. So the little colorful dots, and I wasn't able to capture the whole screen, reflect people on the prior commission who own property throughout the town and what we call the conflict bubble that results, that physical bubble that results from your ownership of property, extending in all different directions from that parcel. And what that really means is that you're typically precluded from making decisions on that bubble area because of a financial conflict that you have. And I say typically because there are certain exemptions out there within the Fair Political Practices Act that may allow you to evaluate and discuss a project when you are within that conflict bubble. And we will always vet those with our town attorney, who is the expert on that law. So Kaylee will be working with each of you, the two, I should say, the two new commissioners, to get your properties, property or properties properly recorded so that we can create an updated map. And then just as a reminder, anytime you acquire or dispose of property, just think of us in your head to let us know because then this will be changed as well. And where this really comes into play, Danielle alluded to it earlier. We had some serious struggles with our last commission, not only in attendance, but with conflicts and potentially not knowing about them ahead of time with ownership of property and then learning at a very late time that they had a conflict and then we would not end up having a quorum. And anyway, it was just not a great situation to be in. So this is just something we want to make you aware of. It's very important. It's state law that we are ensuring that you're not making decisions on, on projects that you have a financial conflict with. And it's also in your interest to not be making decisions on projects that you have a conflict with. So we do our absolute best to make sure we're running this conflict each time we look at a project.
And generally, it is projects. So when we're talking development code amendments, you know, general plan implementation, that sort of higher level where it's affecting, you know, lots of properties throughout the town, you know, and more of a widespread kind of blanket discussion, those are generally not going to create conflicts. So you'll see coming up at some point here, we'll have some more development code amendments that you'll be talking about. And so it's very, very rare that you would actually have a conflict with those. So it's really just more of the projects that come through. So just wanted to recognize that. And we're going to switch gears and we're going to have.
Just, I'm sorry, just a quick question. So if there's, if we're, we have like three things on the agenda and one is a conflict of interest, am I allowed to just, this is unlikely to happen, but am I allowed to just like go sit in the back during the discussion of that and then I can come back and, and reflect on the others because they're not?
Yeah.
Because you don't, so I'm not kicked out of the entire meeting?
Yes, and I would say.
Or one. A commissioner, not me.
We also try and understand what those are ahead of time so that we can work the agenda so that maybe you're doing, you know, the discussion part of those two and then you're able to leave versus having to discuss one, sit out, discuss another. So that's why these maps come in handy for us because then we can kind of work the agendas better, too. So, you know, maybe we're not having to have that scenario where you're just sort of sitting in no man's land waiting for the next agenda item. So we work hard on that. Yeah. Okay, we're going to switch gears. We're going to have Scott and Becky kind of take the lead for engineering. And at the very end, we'll have just like more of an open discussion opportunity.
Okay. Once again, I'm Scott Mathott, Senior Engineer. We're also joined by Becky Bukar, the Assistant Public Works Director. You'll come to find out that engineering is not always in attendance at planning commission meetings. It's really just whenever it, an engineering related question might come up. It comes up often, but there are some projects that are just not engineering related at all. So I'm going to kind of go over really high level. One thing about engineering is that there's a lot of details. We get into it on some projects. But I'm going to try to keep it, a good oversight of it for everyone's benefit tonight. So the overall engineering review is kind of under the oversight of the Public Works Director and Town Engineer, which is Dan Wilkins. The intent of engineering's review during a planning application and land use entitlement process is to identify fatal flaws of the project so that we can be comfortable with a future building permit application coming in and knowing that all of our requirements are going to either fit on the site or that they're capable of meeting the conditions that we're outlining for them. Sometimes there's some questions about why are we requiring them to look at that far into stormwater or snow storage? And these are elements that all have to fit somewhere on a site. And if you don't think of them before the entitlements, they end up becoming an issue during building permits. So we focus our review, this is just a, this is just a rough list. There are many other kind of references that we utilize for our engineering review, but the general plan mobility element of the 2040 general plan, which includes traffic engineering standards. We also have a public improvement in engineering standards. We call it the PIs. It's very, it's similar in kind of in series with the development code, but it's the engineering side. We have public right-of-way encroachments that we deal with on most projects. And I'll kind of get into what those encroachments typically look like. We look at the Trails and Bikeways Master Plan to identify bike routes, whether class one trails, bike lanes, anything like that that might be necessary as part of a development permit. We look at onsite snow storage management and storage. Obviously, up here, that's a priority for projects. Stormwater and drainage, I'll kind of get into that as well, but we have a state mandated stormwater permit that we're required to implement. And then we also work with our transit division and work to make sure that all transit operations are considered as part of development projects. So just quickly on the general plan mobility element, traffic engineering, the mobility element is described as the safe, efficient, environmentally sustainable movement of people and goods as an essential function of the town. So within the general, within the mobility element, we, it discusses level of service, vehicle miles traveled, which if there's any questions tonight, I'm happy to go into what those might look like, or I can always provide more information at a later date. The traffic is occurring in the, in the right-of-way or the ROW. So the Public Works Director, the Town Engineer is responsible for the application of those traffic standards, which are tied to a couple of different things, but usually based on state standards. California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices is one of our main applying standards for what we're doing for traffic engineering. The traffic data is typically analyzed by a traffic consultant, like we saw with the project that was presented tonight. LSC Transportation is our on-call traffic engineer, which we utilize for a lot of projects. We review those in-house. Many of us are professional engineers, but we review those for conformance and make sure that we concur with the results of those as well. And then you'll see mitigation measures or conditions of approvals on projects related to traffic engineering. Common ones, stripe, different striping options, so left-hand term pockets to provide adequate access to driveways, maybe even up to intersection improvement projects. And feel free to jump in if there's any questions on any of these slides along the way. Yes, Chair? Yes? Sure. I will get there. Yeah, I'll get there in a slide or two. The public improvement in engineering standards, again, the PIs, were adopted by town council in 2003. We're currently working on an update to those. We're very close to putting it out for public review, actually. And we're anticipating, yeah, we're anticipating an adoption in fall of this year to kind of bring those standards up to date. Okay, public right-of-way and encroachments, this is a topic that we feel is kind of known for us, but a lot of people don't understand really what these, what the public right-of-way is. And so the public right-of-way is a, is a strip of land that is adjacent to private properties. It is, it's not a easement on someone's property. It's a full separate property. It does not have an APN like a private property, but it's where most of the common public improvements are that you see around town. So roadways, sidewalks, trails can be in right-of-ways or in public access easements, like another one of the projects that we were dealing with tonight. Yeah, please do. And so when, when we're talking about the public rights, right-of-ways, what we're looking at there are the encroachments into those. And so how that would affect the general public utilizing the public improvements. So when we're looking at a development project, we're typically looking at driveways, how those kind of interact with the right-of-way, sidewalks, any kind of on-street parking, and again, trails. There are many other types of encroachments, but these are pretty typical ones that you'll see on projects. Just a rough exhibit in case anyone needed a visual. All of there is that are called out ROW, those are the roadways, the right-of-ways, and then the private residential parcels adjacent to those. Each driveway is considered an encroachment that engineering looks at, makes sure that it's not going to change, you know, either vehicular patterns or drainage patterns for roadside drainages. And then also up on the commercial property on the north, there's a bus pullout there that was a required condition of approval for that project. This is over the Rock Shopping Center in Sierra Meadows, and then a roundabout, which was a town project, but again, is still a potential kind of intersection improvement project that would be an encroachment. Here's the Trails and Bikeways Master Plan. So the current Trails and Bikeways Master Plan was adopted by town, by town council in 2015. What that does is identifies really all of the, the entire trail network throughout town, including class one, class two, and class three. So that's going from paved, separated trails, which is a class one. Class two are typical four-plus-foot bike lanes. Class three are bike routes, so where you're allowed to use a bike on a roadway and the surface types, whether it's asphalt, asphalt concrete, dirt, or others, and the dimensions of those. The Trails and Bikeways Master Plan, when it was adopted, was intended to be implemented as part of private development projects and as part of town capital improvement projects. So the engineering division, we manage and construct a lot of the paved trail projects. So the Legacy Trail, Trout Creek Trail, all town projects that are kind of fulfilling the, you know, the intended vision of the Trails and Bikeways Master Plan. And then conditioning and permitting and coordinating of the implementation is the responsibility of the town engineer. So requiring those of private development projects is within engineering's purview. Does that answer your question, Chair? You're looking for the exact language stating.
No, I'm just, is it, do we have to check for consistency with the Trails Master Plan? It's a, it's a governing document.
Yes. So it's a governing document that engineering looks at as part of every commercial project to see what was the intended bike facility near that project to determine if there's a requirement for a trail or bike lanes or.
And it is referenced in a lot of the findings. So you'll see that as one of the policy documents that's referenced for consistency.
So it is something that we would be looking at for consistency?
Yeah, because it's, it's an adopted policy document.
Another quick question. How many more slides do we have? Do we need to take a quick break? Are we, just a few more?
I think there's four.
Okay. Thanks. No, I'm, I can take a break if we need one, but we're good. Okay.
Okay, I'll try to go quick. So snow management and storage, those of you that have been on the commission for a while now, this is a hot topic that gets brought up a lot because it takes up a lot of room on a property because it has to be managed on the site. So this is related to private development projects and the interaction with the public snow management. Obviously, that's one of our blowers up there in the upper right-hand corner. Brief summary, every project's required to, to manage and store 50, 50 to 75%, depending on where they're located in town, what the snow loads are, of the driving surfaces that they're proposing. And the first bullet's a little confusing the way I wrote it, but what it's saying is if you've got, you know, 1,000 square feet of driving surfaces, you have to have 500 square feet of open space somewhere very, very close to the 1,000 square feet to store snow in. That's in general. It can't be located on any required site improvements such as required parking, required playgrounds, or other site amenities. Another big one, stormwater infiltration facilities. Can't be located there, which again, two big site improvements that take up space that if you don't think of them during land use entitlements, they end up being an issue at building permit issuance. They have to be 10-foot dimensions in all directions. That's not saying that they can't put snow other places, but in order to calculate the capacity, it has to be 10 feet in all dimensions. That includes height. Rampage areas, you get into details of like how you can meet those requirements with some different creative ways that we've done it there, some locations and temporary parking locations. And then sometimes you have to do a snow management or an off-haul plan as approved by the town engineer.
Can you define the ramping areas? Because that comes up a lot and people are like, no, that doesn't really count. Like, that doesn't store as much snow as you say. Like, I just don't really understand how they, how they work.
Sure. It's a, it's a good question. So two things. We've tried to keep snow storage as simple to implement, design, and manage on our side as possible without like, hey, you have to really decide how much a compacted amount of snow fits into a certain box area. So the ramping, what we've done is we've just given a blanket two times the kind of capacity of the area. So in the last scenario, if you're required to store 500 square feet, you have to store at least 250 square feet of ramped area. A ramping area is a, is a very, it's kind of a way of art of removing snow and managing snow because what you have to do is you have to push the snow into a ramp that has to be a certain dimension. So 20 feet wide so that you can get like a plow blade through it and 50 feet long so that you have enough area to continue to push the snow, push the snow, and you pack it down as you drive over it. And so it's, it doesn't work on most sites, I'll say that. But there are some that have a nice clear 50-foot-long area at the end of a drive aisle that it kind of works well to just push off and be able to drive onto it and continue to build it up and provides additional capacity. It's a, it's a way that we manage snow storage in the public right-of-ways, like the end of cul-de-sacs or dead-end roads. That's how we do it. So we've provided it as an option. Stormwater and drainage. So again, I kind of mentioned. Stormwater and drainage, so again, I kind of mentioned this before, there's a State of California Stormwater Permit, and there's, it kind of goes into some different ways that we have to administer them, but kind of the primary goals of it are making sure that we're continuing any existing water course and/or drainage with development on private properties, including the town is governed under a similar permit that's a little bit, little bit different, to treat stormwater for impervious surfaces. So any new parking lots, roofs, any other structures that would impede the normal infiltration of water onto a site, you have to provide stormwater for, or treatment for it. And then just ensuring it's really geared towards no impact to like, if water enters your site, it falls on your site, you need to treat it before you safe-release it back into the public right-of-way, trying to limit or no impact to the public or adjacent property owners. And that's all kind of outlined further in Chapter 11 of the Municipal Code, if you want to really get into it. And so we, so for transit operations, this comes up on some projects, but it's kind of always happening in the background. We have a Transportation Program Manager named Alfred Knox, and the primary goal is the management of transportation demand in Truckee, and to determine actionable items to address those transit needs. A couple of ones that you're probably familiar with, the T A R T services, so coordination with the regional transit operations, microtransit, van pools, bike shares, the e-bikes that are scattered around town, all are programs that Transit Operations has kind of implemented to address some transit needs throughout town. Something that often comes up on development permits are transit shelters and bus pullouts to make sure that there's areas for the transit operations to safely leave the roadway and for people to wait for those. So kind of a big picture, all engineering conditions have some type of nexus to a policy-based document. Traffic impact fees and facilities impact fees are part of different programs, the Trails and Bikels Master Plan, P I's, the Public Right-of-Way Management, General Plan, Snow Management, frontage improvements that are outlined in the P I's, and then the stormwater outlined in Chapter 11. I tried to find ones that weren't geared towards one of these, but almost all engineering conditions are related to life safety of the traveling public, the occupants of the development that we're considering, and/or the environment. So it's important to remember that those conditions need to be clear, implementable, and based on an analysis, some type of, and typically an engineering analysis that supports the condition. It is very difficult for those to include recommendations for different things, or considerations for different things. They're usually very absolute. And so they're, they're usually not contextually modifiable, because they're either state or federal requirements, they have life safety components, their council-adopted fees or impact fee schedules, or the jurisdiction is provided to the Town Engineer to make those determinations in his sole discretion or her sole discretion, depending on who it is. So there has been situations that have come up in the past where Planning Commission has wanted to recommend different implementation of, say, traffic devices. That can be done in a couple of different ways, but I think a way to do it would be in the meeting minutes for the Town Engineer to consider as part of a development permit. I think that's it. If there's any questions on those-
So can you send, you can send these to us?
Yeah.
Lot of good lists and things in there, thanks.
Yeah, and I have one last slide, but I figured since we had someone here that might want to make public comment, maybe we want to do public comment before I do the last slide.
Opening the meeting for public comment.
He probably is watching, he's been texting me. So I'll be brief, so you guys can get on, I know it's getting late for you all. My name's Ed Vento, I'm the Executive Director of CAT, and I'm just going to read off this so I don't miss anything. Chair Kavanaugh, is it now? Commissioners and Town Staff. On behalf of the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe, CAT, I'd like to extend a warm welcome to Commissioner Tupe and Commissioner Kaufman, as they begin their service on the Planning Commission. We appreciate your willingness to dedicate your time and expertise to this important role, and we'd also like to thank the existing commissioners for the role that you play and for your time that you basically volunteered to do this. Thank you very much. We recognize that serving as a planning commissioner is not always an easy or popular position. The decisions and recommendations you make directly impact the growth, sustainability, and overall harmony of our community. Your work requires balancing many perspectives, those of residents, businesses, developers, and environmental stewards alike, and probably people that I've forgotten to list on here, all while upholding the vision and the character of Truckee. CAT values the opportunity to work collaboratively with the Planning Commission and appreciates the thoughtful consideration you bring to each issue. We look forward to engaging in productive discussions and working together to ensure that policies and planning efforts continue to support a vibrant and thriving community. Once again, congratulations on your appointments, and we wish you great success in your terms, and we thank you for your service to Truckee, our community. And staff, we also thank you, we know you work really hard, you're here away from your families very late, and I know you do it a few times a month, so thank you. All right, and thank you, Danielle, for allowing me to read this.
Thank you, Ed.
Yes, the last slide is more kind of for the Planning Commission, and we didn't put much on here because we knew we'd probably be getting towards the end of our night here, but there were a few kind of topics we just wanted to have you discuss. So the first one is something that's new that we're working on. Our Planning Department and sort of our collective development services that happens between planning, building, and engineering are working on making some improvements to our land use permit process. And one of the ideas that we kind of had as part of that is sort of meeting availability primarily for housing projects. And so right now, Planning Commission meets once a month, but we have had scenarios where housing projects have been held up because of that once-a-month timeframe. And for those projects, the timing is pretty critical because they often have to be able to have an entitled project before they go out and kind of finish their funding process. And so we've talked about setting aside a second meeting timeframe a month for specifically housing projects as just a sort of starting point, which would require some new commitments on behalf of the Planning Commission. I will say that we don't typically have that many housing projects that are coming forward where we need this, but it is an option that we think would really help for those projects where they're just not quite meeting the timeframes of the one meeting a month that we have, and could help us kind of keep them moving while we still have additional workloads. So that's sort of one topic. The second one is our council does a Go Dark July, which means that they don't meet, so that they can feel free to take that time for vacation or just a mental checkout. We haven't typically applied that to the Planning Commission because we have had backlogs of projects, but that is an option if the Commission wants to consider not having meetings in July. And then the last one is more about when you have questions. We've heard some sort of preliminary feedback that it would be nice as a commission if you could actually hear what the other commissioners' questions were and what the staff response was, so very similar to what happens with council. We don't have that as a formalized process right now, but if that's something as a commission you think would be beneficial, we could come up with sort of a procedure for that of like when we would need the questions, and, you know, how we're able to respond, and what the timing of that looks like. So those were just a few things, but I also just want to leave it open so that as a commission, if there's things that you just, you know, want to talk about, you have this opportunity since we're kind of calling it an open-ended training anyway, and then just sort of down the road, we'll add some additional kind of things to talk about with you as a commission, like the what's in the hopper, things like that. So that's all we have.
If some of you would like to comment on some of these things right now with me?
I'm okay with second meetings when they're needed. I don't think we should go dark, and I think the procedures for answering commission questions should follow the councils.
Can I ask a question? You mentioned a backlog, or there's sometimes a backlog of planning projects, and I was speaking with Councilmember Clifstad recently, who also mentioned this. How, how big is that backlog? You know, I know everything's, you know, you have to prepare still, but like, if you had time to prepare, how many projects could be ready to go like very quickly?
So I think there's maybe, backlog is for us because we typically try to hold about three agenda items per meeting, just looking at, you know, how fast we can get through discussions. It's more of a timing of, that would be the fourth project, not because we have, you know, 15, you know, waiting to get on an agenda. Like, just organically, I feel like projects tend to kind of like shake out where it's like, one's not quite ready, but this other one all of a sudden is ready, and so we're moving this one. So at the end of the agenda, Jenna will go over and say, here's what we think is going to come up for the next meeting when we do informational items. We're always trying to kind of look at that. I mean, we work in oftentimes a four-month chunk of like, what do we project out happening in the next four months so that we can make those things align? So it's not so much that we have, you know, 15 that are ready to go and lack of availability of a Planning Commission meeting, it's just that we do sometimes get it to the point where because we've had a continued item, or we had something come down from council, or we've got, you know, already three in there that we can't quite make it. I mean, last year it was more often than not just lack of quorum, so we won't, I don't think we'll have that issue anymore. So I think this is just more that we can get a little bit more flexible with housing projects if we have a second meeting.
Thank you.
Are you kind of thinking second meeting every month?
Well, just for our scheduling consistency, we would have a placeholder so that you know it would be the, whatever we decided, the third Thursday of every month, or whatever we come up with as that date, so that we can kind of project what that could be, but we really don't have a ton, it's just sort of like that flexibility for that, for now, as like a, let's ease into it and see if we need them, and, you know, it's sort of a bonus offering for someone with an affordable housing project of, hey, you know, we're, every two weeks, we're, you know, able to kind of look at the scheduling for that so that we can back into it with our timing of writing the staff reports.
Is Town Council the second and fourth Tuesday?
Yes.
So wouldn't it make sense to be the first and third?
We've talked about that, I think we want to kind of look at our scheduling because what's different than some divisions where they're only doing council, because we have Historic Preservation Advisory Commission, we have Zoning Administrator, we have Planning Commission, and we have council, there's, you know, sometimes just scheduling difficulties with a staff person who might have multiple reports going to any one of those things, so we want to be sensitive to that. But that's sort of a logical answer, yes.
I mean, I think you could deliberate on, is this something you'd like to consider, and then we can maybe come back with some different standard times, dates, days, et cetera.
Ponder.
We're unclear if this is something you'd like to accommodate, and/or if you're able to accommodate. We know some of you have other obligations, so there might not be a standard.
And it wouldn't be like the holidays, like that timeframe, generally, we're canceling meetings during those timeframes anyway, so the idea isn't to try and like stack up before the holidays, because that just creates challenges.
And the idea is definitely to be spreading them out, not just have two big meetings on the same day. That's, well, it's, it's a thought to put in the- Thoughts on that? Let's ponder it.
I certainly couldn't do that every month, but-
Neither.
If there, if we get warning, you know, like, okay, March is going to be a big month, or May, or, I don't know if you have a sense of when there's a lot coming in. It kind of varies, right?
It does, but I would say if you look at it from an entitlement standpoint of someone who might want to actually go to construction, they're kind of doing it in the winter timeframe more often than not, so that they can get their building permits in the queue and ready to be able to break ground, because of our grading constraints that we have, May 1st is generally the soonest that they're able to start grading. So I would say it's kind of more that winter timeframe that it's likely, but again, in any given year, I mean, we're not processing a ton of, you know, affordable housing projects that are truly at that level. So I don't think it would be more than a couple times a year, honestly.
I think that's totally fair.
Can I, I would definitely make myself available. I know it's really hard to build in this town, and we have such a narrow building season, and I've heard from folks, it's like, if I can't get on the agenda, like, I'm delayed a whole year, right? The only question I have is why limited to just housing or affordable housing, and not anytime there's like five projects for that month, and we just can't fit it in one month, in one meeting?
I mean, this is a bit of a trial, and we're trying to come up with incentives for affordable housing, so that's one reason. And generally, we don't have five projects competing for one agenda. You know, we're, like I said, we're trying to work hard to, to make sure that, you know, things are, that are ready get on an agenda.
Let's ponder it. If there's some suggestions, specific-
Let's ponder it, meaning the commission or staff?
No, I think both. That's a, that's a big question to ask for a definitive answer, I think, from us, you know, on the spot, so-
And we can give you like a draft schedule of what that could look like, too, so you could see how many dates that actually is, and we could give you a little bit more of like the timing background for that, of like how far in advance you would know, that type of stuff.
Well, presumably, it would be 12 placeholders a year.
I think it's less than that because of the holidays, so it's probably more like nine, honestly.
I mean, I think, I like, I like the idea of incentivizing it for housing, especially because we tend to get a lot of public comment on housing projects, which takes a lot of time, so having them separated out might actually make other meetings move quicker or faster. But yeah, I think just having enough notice of when we'll be needed and when we won't would be really helpful. So yeah, if you could come back with a draft schedule or something, I think that would be really, really helpful for, for me, anyway.
It's a discussion. It's just a discussion.
And then, I don't know, why would, would you guys want to go dark in July? I, I think people wait long enough, I don't see the point in that.
I'd rather go dark in September, but I don't think we need to-
Me, too, because I'll be gone, so.
Yeah, same here.
July's pretty busy, so I feel like we're all around. Like, save our go-dark time.
I don't, I don't know that we need to go dark.
Unless like, it's just not a busy time for projects coming in, I guess if that's, then like-
It's almost always busy, so that's why we, why we've never done it, but I, we wanted to offer it since the council does it, so there's already a precedent for it, and it would be, you know, easy to implement, it's just, we are often busy then.
Is it useful, I assume it would be useful for staff to have a planning commission meetings?
I mean, we're always working on other stuff, so I mean, it kind of just, it's like you squeeze the tube and it goes on the two sides, it's kind of that same scenario where we end up doing more in June and August, yeah.
And maybe we can see, like, if we do start doing this two-meeting-a-month, if we then feel differently about having a month off in the summer, like, just keep it-
That's a good point.
Likely.
As an open conversation topic.
Well, we can always revisit this, right?
I think we, perhaps we should hold our July meeting date for now. As you pointed, as we, we often hear, people, people don't like to wait.
So the answer is no.
No. I think you're hearing from us, no, on the July. And then on the commission questions, I know that, well, we just learned that, you know, Planning Commissioner Academy, yes, it does blow up your day if we ask a big question, and some, it does certainly an interruption if we ask a small one, and I do appreciate the rapid turnaround that I get when I send a question before a meeting. We've also been told at the Planning Commissioner Academy, which was fine, thank you for sending us, you know, it'd be best if you had no surprises during the meeting, I think that's actually true for us, too. So getting those questions in ahead of time is, is important.
And seeing the other commissioners' questions is really what-
I think that could be very useful if it's possible.
Yeah, I think it's awesome.
Sometimes there's, I know, it's like, whoa, what if your question came in via phone call at 3:00 on, you know, Monday or Tuesday, or mine comes in Tuesday morning, and then is it, is it possible to make a rapid turnaround and inform us?
I mean, to Commissioner Clarence' point, council has a procedure for that, so I think the cutoff is noon on Monday, and then the response is noon on Tuesday.
That's right, you said same as council would work.
Yeah, so there is an established procedure, if that's something that the commission's interested in, we can always try it, and if-
Yeah.
I mean, if we're getting, you know, 150 questions, maybe not, but if we're getting, you know, five, you know, per commissioner or something like that, like, that's doable.
I'm seeing nods up here that we like the idea of doing, using the council format.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, I think we're willing to give it a try because we didn't really have a consistent process, so I think that'll help us with even consistency, too, and then it also provides that information for the public, too. So maybe they have the same question, and instead of asking it here, they're able to see that it was already asked, and there's a response. and there's a response.
So, what Danielle's referring to is they actually post the council, the commissioner, the council members' questions for public knowledge.
And then a reminder when you send out the agenda packet that that's what our, our deadline is for getting in the publicly published questions.
Great, those were all our just sort of basic ones for tonight, and then if you, as a commission, want to discuss anything since you're here.
I wanted to congratulate Coral on her first chair, good job!
Well, thank you, Mitch, and thank you guys for electing me, I'll try to get better at this, I'll read my little.
Can I open this?
That's from the town manager.
I was told not to by the chair.
No, I didn't say not to, I just said I'm not yet because I don't know if we're allowed to, can we open them now? I know, it's like I didn't.
Yeah, we, we do have like a, just a couple last-minute parts of the agenda, so if, if you don't want to, if you don't feel like you want to talk about anything, that's great too, we just wanted to kind of leave it open for you, and then if not, Jenna can go into her just informational item, and then you can do commission reports.
I guess I have one question. Let's say, sorry, let's say I know staff is working on, I don't know, like, housing element or something, and I'm curious to get an update on that at like a commission meeting, would that be like, what's this next section actually called? Information items?
Yeah, so sometimes at that, when you do like your commission member reports, you'll say, I'm interested in the housing element, I was wondering if staff could talk about that briefly during the next meeting and informational items, and we would do that. I will say for that one in particular, we're going to do that anyway because you're going to be heavily involved in that, and we just are starting that process sort of at the staff level, so that will be a big work program task for the Planning Commission and Council coming up in the next couple of years.
Great, and then kind of a related one, let's say, this is another hypothetical, let's imagine we, you know, every month we keep hearing similar public comment in the un-agendized comments section about some issue that may be related to, I don't know, the development code, just pretend, and we decide we want to like agendize that topic so we can actually get more public comment on it and maybe just as a commission discuss like what the matters are, there's maybe not necessarily a report from staff needed or just, or I don't even know if there would be outcomes, but if that was the kind of thing we wanted to do, how would, how would this commission go about something like that?
So, it's a little unusual because council typically takes the lead for something like that, especially if it's related to a development code amendment, that because our time is dictated by council's work program, we may not have capacity to help in something that is outside of the scope of what they've already asked us to work on, but, you know, kind of elevating stuff to the council, you have that as an option, and it really depends on if it's like already related to something we're working on or not. So, I think we would just kind of have to gauge like what, what we're hearing, what the interest is, sort of what councils asked us to do, not do, if it's related, not related, and then kind of work through it for that.
So, and this is hypothetical, if it was somehow related to like housing element, like that could, you know, essentially get merged into that, those existing discussions on housing element?
Yeah, because ultimately, like with the housing element, if someone's, you know, struggling, or we have multiple community members struggling with, you know, an aspect of it, then that's you as the commission saying like, we'd like to have more discussion on this one aspect of the housing element, like that, that's definitely something we can look at, yeah.
I've heard a lot about the work plan when watching council, is that a published document?
It is published, and the town manager does like quarterly updates also, but we're also in the process of updating it to do the next two years, so that's kind of in process. That I think we have scheduled in the next couple months to go back in front of council for them to discuss. And then what I had mentioned before too is actually a couple years ago, when we did the first work program, we did a presentation to the Planning Commission about everything that was in there, so we can do that again too, once it's official and council said, yes, this is what we're working on, we can just come back and bring you, so that way you don't have to go seek it out, and we just do it very high-level, kind of like with graphics and stuff so that it's easy to understand and.
I think that would be great, I think it would help us like keep our ear to the ground on topics that we know are.
Provide some context, yeah.
Yeah, being worked on, and then it's like, oh, if I hear a community member mentions something that I know is being worked on, then that's maybe a good time is now to mention.
Yeah, and that's, we do try and mix informational items in for you as a commission also, so I mentioned like the annual community development report that we do is another one where we're doing a presentation for you, we're doing a presentation for council, it's, you know, kind of on the website, so there's just some things like that where we're kind of just giving you bits of things that are more informational, there's no action for you, it's kind of at that presentation level, but it helps you with that communication with the public.
Thank you. Sorry, that was all.
Other, we're kind of mixing staff reports and informational items here and commissioner member reports, any member reports or staff reports?
I just have a quick staff report, it's my usual what's happening next month. We will have a meeting, we've got one project confirmed now that we know will be up for review. It's the Gateway West project, it's a Tahoe, it's a Tahoe Forest Hospital District project on Donner Pass Road, and then if we have anything else that pops up, we'll let you guys know, but as of now, there's just one.
And if we can pull together during a what's in the hopper, we'll try and work on that too, just a matter of deadlines.
That would be so great, that would be so great.
But that's our goal, to get something to sooner than later about that.
And what's in the hopper, knowing that it can change and?
Yeah, it's truly just a snapshot in time, but we will touch on current planning and then our long-range planning, so also kind of more of an overview of the 2040 general plan to start getting you kind of integrated with that too, knowing what's sort of the near-term stuff, midterm, long-term, just so you have some familiarity.
What's Gateway West?
It's the existing building.
Old Xander's building.
Where Xander's and Start House used to be, depending on how long you've lived here, you know where that is. Two, two business locations ago, Gateway Deli.
It was Safeway at one point, which really go back.
I have another question, is this more worth less than $630 and do I have to tell Andy about it?
No.
Okay. Right, does anybody care to move to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
And third, and fourth.
Yes, here we go.